Okay, everyone, looks like they're here. Alex, are you good to go?
Yes, I'm ready if you guys are.
Okay, I'm ready. Okay, I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of March 8, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure to visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application if needed. The city clerk will call on those that have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and for the public. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Here.
Councilmember Uring.
Here.
Mayor Pratam Gristanti. Mayor Pratam Gristanti, you're muted.
Here but muted.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I'll now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Can we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
We have a second. I see Paul putting his hand up, so we have a second. Can we have roll call on approval of the agenda, please?
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Pratam Gristanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Uring.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 26, 2021.
Thank you very much. We are now to item 1A for an update on the school district separation. Do we have Karen? Oh, there's Christine. There you are. Hi, Christine.
Hello, Mayor Pearson and Council. How are you today?
Well, thank you.
If we can just start the presentation. I'd also ask if you can unmute my comrades. Hopefully, they're unmuted. So, good evening, and thank you so much for taking the time today to go over our brief update on school separation. Next slide. Just as a brief reminder, I'm Christine Wood with Bass Western Craig Room, the Deputy City Attorney for the City of Malibu, responsible for advising the city as it relates to school separation. On the consultant team for school separation again is Latonya Kirk Carter from Kirk Carter and Associates, Kathy Domenico from Capital Public Finance Group, and Terry Ryland with the Ryland School Business Consulting Firm. With the three of these remarkable professionals, you have a wealth of school district knowledge and expertise. You have someone who's been a CBO for one of the only other school districts in the county of Los Angeles that's basic aid and has been had been basic aid for several, several years, which is a designation that will be applied to the independent Malibu Unified School District. So with Latonya, we have a great wealth of knowledge as it relates to the type of school district we are trying to erect. You also have Kathy, who has an incredible amount of information and knowledge as it relates to property taxes and how they flow to school districts, which is something we'll get into briefly here. And then Terry has also had a lot of experience actually working as a CBO or Chief Business Officer for school districts and currently does a lot of work as it relates to the funding formula for school districts. As you can probably imagine, school districts are just they're a different animal than cities, and so we'll try and make some of those distinctions clear today. Next slide. I wanted to offer you a little bit again of background, just a small, small piece of background, just to remind you that the 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 community of Malibu is going through this for several, several years, at least 10 years in the formation of organizations and in the formation of official actions. But I'm sure this has been, as I've done the research myself, I know this has been an issue for residents for decades. Almost as soon as you joined Santa Monica as a school district, there was almost immediate regrets, as the history books have told me. So it looks as if this has been an ongoing push by the community, starting with AMPS, the creation of the Advocates for Malibu Public Schools in 2011, where there were studies and thousands of signatures collected and petitions actually created to form the new school district. Then there was an effort to really work with the school district and make sure that we had a united front to create a new school district, and that happened in the form of the Malibu Unification Negotiations Committee, or MUNK, as you heard referred to. MUNK was an interesting organization in the sense that it was it made it was made up equally of members from Santa Monica and Malibu, was ratified by both the city and the school district's Board of Directors in an effort to create a unanimous and a consensus really between the communities. And they did come to a decision, and a MUNK report was submitted in February 2017 that was accepted by the city and rejected by the school board yet again as we attempted to go in a unified way to an independent Malibu Unified. And then the city, again, in response to the desires of the community, went forward in 2018, which is when I got involved and tried to move forward with a petition and then went to negotiations yet again to try and negotiate something with the district, only to have those negotiations fail. So in October of last year, the city council directed us to continue to move forward. Could you take me to the next slide, please? As the as we've tried to move forward since, I just wanted to let you know what we've done. At the October 12, 2020 meeting, the city council, we provided them an update to let them know how things were going, the status of negotiations, and the financial model that had been proposed by the school district and what we thought were some of the weaknesses and if there were any of the strengths of that financial model. And then we asked the council to consider some of the information, some of the observations we had made. And in particular, the ad hoc committee made some recommendations based on their experiences, both Karen and I'm sorry, Councilmember Fair and at that time Councilmember Mullin, just about the the way we believe the district had been negotiating. And at that time, the city council voted to allow us to pursue the petition at Laco. And soon after that meeting, we had a town hall meeting, and we've also presented to the district's Financial Oversight Committee to provide them some clarifying pieces of information as it relates to our difference, the difference in our financial proposals. At this time, especially based on some of the questions that we got at the last city council meeting, we thought we spent a few slides just kind of introducing you to a little bit about how schools are funded, so that then we can tell you what the real differences were in the proposals in case that 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 is of importance or of interest. So I'm going to turn it over to Terry.
Thank you, Christine, and good evening. I'm pleased to be here. Just, can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. What I want to talk about for just a couple of slides is the basic operating chunk of money that school districts use to fund most of the most of their operations. And it's a combination of property taxes and state aid. The biggest chunk, it's called the Local Control Funding Formula. And if years ago, if you were part of these committees and you heard the term revenue limit, LCFF funding replaced revenue limit in 2013, 14. And basically, a calculation is made that says this district is entitled to X amount of dollars. Property taxes make up some of that, and whatever property taxes fall short, the state makes up the difference. So LCFF is basically your local property taxes and state aid. In addition, some districts also receive other local funding on top of the LCFF funding. And in this case, Santa Monica, Malibu has a large chunk of this other local revenue in terms of parcel tax, sales tax, redevelopment tax revenues. And right now, these dollars already exist. They're funding the Santa Monica, Malibu Combined School District, and they would still exist to fund each of the two separate districts. Next slide. So the graphic on the right describes the situation that Santa Monica, Malibu currently finds itself in, and the new Malibu Unified School District would find itself in, in which case that calculation is made, you're entitled to X, and property taxes are greater than that amount, at that amount. So how we describe it, we say property taxes, you fill the bucket, they overflow, the district gets to keep the extra, and there's just a minimum amount of state aid that's provided. So initially, after the reorganization with Malibu Unified, the new Malibu Unified would definitely be basic aid. And at this point, it looks like the Santa Monica Unified School District would not be, that's based on today's numbers. They wouldn't be far off, but and at some point, they would likely move into that basic aid category. But no new property taxes and no new funding from any public agencies, including and especially in this case, the city, would be required to fund either of these districts after unification. So the crux of the disagreement that we've been having is do we include all of those other local revenues that I described in our analysis of the remaining available unrestricted operating revenue that each district would have? Is it, are we talking about just the LCFF revenue and any property taxes related to that? Or as the district currently spends, this 53 million or so of parcel tax and sales tax and redevelopment taxes, that's currently available in an unrestricted manner to fund the district operations? And so we're going to, we're using in our analysis the fact that those revenues would continue to fund the ongoing operations of the new Santa Monica District for the most part. And then I will introduce a familiar face to you. Latonya Kirk Carter will cover the next slide.
Thank you, Terry. Next slide. And thank you, city council and mayor, for allowing us to speak to you this evening. This slide represents what we would like to make sure that we impress upon the Unification Reorganization Committee at Laco, that both districts, as it stands now, both districts if split would still be two of the top-funded districts in Los Angeles County. Currently, as it stands now, Santa Monica, Malibu is number three in per pupil revenue for a school district. The if once the if once the districts are split, Malibu would become number three, and Santa Monica would become number four. And what we want the committee to know is that that the Santa Monica students would not be harmed. We don't want them to get the narrative that Santa Monica's students would be harmed by Malibu leaving or splitting off into its own district. Lastly, as Terry talked about on this slide, one of the things that we had been negotiating since 2018 when we started this was the bringing in of the other local revenue before you talked about, before we talked about how much Malibu would subsidize Santa Monica. And as you can see by this slide, the Santa Monica other local revenues, 51 million, 51.4 million, is a substantial part of their income. And one of our sticking points when we were in negotiations were them wanting to only count the LCFF revenue and then do the level up. We wanted to include all revenues for not just Santa Monica, and as you can see, Malibu had would have a small portion of other local revenue, and that for Malibu primarily, that would be the parcel tax. For Santa Monica, that large portion not only includes their parcel tax, but their sales tax that they get with their city and rents and leases and things like that. So when we go before Laco, this is this is an area that we really want to impress upon the community or the committee that no students will be harmed, and these are really wealthy districts. You can see we're right below Beverly Hills, Acton, Aguado, San Marino, you know these districts. Next slide. And so why does reorganization make sense for Malibu and why right now? Well, as we've talked about before, you may have heard us talk about before, these two districts would not even be allowed today. They are not contiguous. They are 25 miles, 22 to 25 miles away from one another. Right now, they actually, there's, it's it's no longer convenient for any one of them. And one of the things we're talking about in our committee, our group, is that the dash, Santa Monica, Malibu, just does not make sense today. In truth, the two districts have already start to split. There's a separate general obligation facilities bond for Malibu. There's a separate educational track for Malibu High School and Santa Monica High School. The two, the two cities actually function as two separate districts today. So now is the time for us to impress upon the Laco Reorganization Committee that it's time for us to finally make it formal and that there become a Malibu Unified and a Santa Monica Malibu. The one, the one thing that the committee, the reorganization committee at Laco, one of their charges is to make sure that communities have local control. That's one of the things that comes before them all the time and redistricting maps, and Malibu doesn't have local control. No redistricting map will allow Malibu to have local control of its students. And the decision makers in Santa Monica, which take up 40% of the student base, and we're, the 20% are, I'm sorry, 60% is Malibu, 40% is us. We are just, the things that work for Malibu are always second thoughts. They're not impressed upon. Lastly, and I know that we know this, but we want to impress upon the committee that we are 35% of the property tax base, but 14% of the Santa Monica, Malibu student base. It's just lopsided and it's not fair, but what we want to impress is that no Santa Monica students still will be harmed by us leaving. They will have a higher percentage per student because our students will be on their own district. So the money that they're now splitting amongst all the students will now just be split amongst the students to stay with with Santa Monica. Next slide, and I'm going to throw it over to my colleague Kathy Domingo.
I think it's my turn.
Of course, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just going to close this out with just a reminder of some of our next steps. So as most of you know, we have submitted the petition to the Laco Superintendent. These are the general steps for reorganization or unification of a new school district. This Laco Superintendent will review the petition usually for sufficiency and then transmit the petition to the Laco County Committee on Reorganization. That is what Latonya referred to several times as the committee. This is the committee that we're in front of right now. What's extraordinary about this is that because of the cry and the desire from the community, the city has decided to take this petition to Laco directly, which they're allowed to do pursuant to a particular provision in the education code. What's unique about that is this particular provision didn't exist 20, well, it 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 was put into the statute in the year 2000. So this is the first time that we're aware of, particularly in Los Angeles County, but possibly in the state. This is the first time this provision is being used, meaning this is the first time a city is bringing forth a unification petition. And so there's no, there's no precedent for us to look at in order to determine what's the best way to proceed. But even more particularly important, there's no precedent for the county committee or their staff to look at to know how to proceed. So instead of the Laco County Superintendent having looked at the petition for sufficiency, it's been with the county committee who is now going to hold in step two a preliminary public hearing. We met before them last week. They confirmed that we will now have a preliminary public hearing on April 17, 2021. It is our opinion and position that this preliminary hearing, which is only unique to city-issued petitions, is really the opportunity for the county committee to look at the petition for sufficiency. That's not the position or the opinion of the county committee staff. We will have that discussion, but whether it's a hearing on the sufficiency of the petition or the full merits of the petition, we will have that hearing on Saturday, April 17. So one of the questions we we've received is whether or not, or what is there that we can do now, like as a community or as as interested people, put the date of April 17 on your calendar. We would like to make sure that the community is there and present and actively making their wishes known to the county committee. We would also encourage you, if you've been a parent or family who's had students go through Santa Monica Unified School District, that you reach out to and visit our website, the city's website. Within the school separation section of the website, there's an area where you can offer a testimonial or an experience. We're looking to collect those stories so that we can have some firsthand experiences with the school district for that particular hearing. The next steps, if the county committee grants the petition at that hearing or soon thereafter that hearing, if they grant or if they grant the petition, the petition moves forward, they will have adopted a tentative recommendation. After the tentative recommendation, there's a lot of work that has to take place then, which is why we really believe this is a preliminary hearing. They have to hold public hearings in Malibu and in Santa Monica. They have to do feasibility studies. They have to do a sequoia analysis around the erection of a new school district. Next slide. After all of those public hearings and after all of that kind of analysis and research and work, we will at that point be offering final numbers. There was another question about when will we get to see the actual numbers? Any numbers that we've provided, even today, the numbers that Latonya went over, our numbers from maybe two years ago, I think. This could be five years away when we get to this last public hearing, so we're going to be looking at new numbers then. So we're not offering you any actual numbers right now. It's just not possible. But at that point, at step number five, the county committee would look at the full proposal and all of the background information and the supporting documents, and then they will adopt a final recommendation, hopefully approving the petition. It's at that point that the recommendation may include some statement by the county committee about what what map, what body of voters should be allowed to vote on whether or not Malibu gets to be its own school district, right? They may put that into this final recommendation. So I know there was a question about whether or not the Santa Monica voters will get to participate in that, in that, in that process. That's unclear, but that will come out as a final recommendation in step five. And then if we pass that step and it's approved, the petition is approved, and it's sent to the state board, who will hold public hearings themselves. And then after the state board approves it, then we will have an election within the jurisdictional area that's determined by the state board. So as I've always said, as I've come before you, if I've had the opportunity, or the pleasure to speak before you, this is the beginning of a very long process. But we will continue to provide you updates. And again, the the biggest thing we can ask is for But we will continue to provide you updates. And again, the, the biggest thing we can ask is for you to prepare to present and participate in the April seventeenth public hearing. That is it for our update. Um, if you can go to the next slide to close this out. And I'm open to questions if that's appropriate at this time.
Thank you very much, Christine and Terry and Latonya and the whole team. We really appreciate that. Counsel, do you have any questions? Steve?
Councilmember, you're muted.
Christine, I, I did, Christine, thank you for your email. That information was very, very helpful. Just a couple of quick ones. You know, the other local revenue that Santa Monica gets of the, whatever that number is, a, a large, is a large portion of that sales tax revenue?
I, I believe either Terry or Kathy can speak to specifically, yes, a large portion of his sales tax. Some leasing revenue from some of the properties that they own.
And their parcel tax.
And their parcel.
Is their parcel tax is the, is the largest portion of it?
That's what I wanted to know. Okay. It's the parcel tax. Good. Last, you know, the April seventeenth meeting, is that going to be a Zoom meeting?
That will be a virtual meeting, yes.
We can watch it.
Yes, and we, we should, we should all watch.
Get that link out because I would like to just see what happens. Thank you.
We, we all like councilmember, we're all looking forward to what happens.
Thank you.
Bruce?
I just want to thank everybody for that presentation. It was very helpful to me, uh, both tonight as well as in writing earlier. And, um, Christine, especially the, the attorney client privilege memo was very helpful to me. I'm going to have some questions for you offline over the next week or so, but, um, for now, this was great. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Silverstein.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to item two A, communications from the public for items concerning matters which are not on the agenda, for which the city council is subject matter jurisdiction. I'm going to take a wild guess that we might have a public speaker or two.
You do. You actually have twelve public speakers tonight. I'll read their names in order and then call them one by one to speak.
Thank you.
First, we have Drew Smith, followed by Mark Bowdy, Scott Dietrich, Lloyd Ahern, Scott Jacobs, Lonnie Gordon, Joe Drummond, um, I'm sorry, Melanie Gosward, Stacy Rouse, David Kramer, Howard Rudsky, and Arnold Bernstein. Our first speaker is Drew Smith.
Okay, thank you. Do we have you there, Drew?
I'm here. I'm just, uh, I thought you're, uh, managing the screen here because I'm seeing.
Somebody is, not me.
So, okay, I see where it's at now. Okay, yeah, so Drew Smith, Los Angeles County Fire Department. I'm the assistant party chief for the area. And I just wanted to let you know that your fire family is doing good. We're, uh, down with our related COVID illnesses due to the seventy-five percent compliance that we have within the organization of our vaccination. So I just want to give you a update on the fire that we had on February twenty-eighth that started at four twenty-four AM. That was a wind driven fire. And basically it started at Malibu Knowles and Malibu Canyon. It was electrical in nature. So we don't know if it was a malfunctioning piece of equipment, if it was an animal in contact with wires that fell to the ground. So that is still to be determined, but it was not a transient or some, uh, nature of that. And we also had a second start simultaneously in the Sierra Retreat area, so that was over, um, just at or around a half mile away. So initially I was the incident commander. Uh, we were co-located with law enforcement. We had a, um, wind driven fire that happened. We initially set up our, um, box, if you will. We wanted to keep the fire west of Stewart Ranch Road and Malibu City Hall, south of Malibu Canyon, north of Pacific Coast Highway and east of Malibu Canyon Road. We were unified with law. We had, uh, people that were self evacuating because we saw that the threat was down Coastview, extending down to through Civic Center, Vista Pacifica, and it was in the Winter Canyon area. We have some people that were self evacuating and then I announced that we're going to keep people sheltered in place. So we didn't clog up the roads. We had adequate structure protection, um, defense groups in place. So that was the safest option for the public. We felt very secure and that we were going to manage that fire and it was just under five acres. We, uh, immediately identified that we had that structure threat. And we also, uh, due to the good work of your firefighters, rescued two dogs, put them in a fire engine, and then we could not move the fire engine because the dogs now, I don't know how they got them into that fire engine. The dogs are really angry. So we had to, uh, then, uh, wait for animal to co, control to come out. We also, um, um, had a second alarm that did show up, uh, really quick. And we used also Hellspot eighty-eight Alpha, which is at Pepperdine. And so the unification in the, um, with Pepperdine University on the Hellspot, we were in contact with Reva, with Susan. Mayor, uh, Pearson, I appreciate you coming by the incident command post and checking in with us and seeing if we needed anything. That is much appreciated for that. So we set up, uh, the incident command post at Malibu Bluff Park. We knew that it would be a fire that would be, have limited spread potential, but still could have some challenges. And our immediate tactical opportunities to engage was to keep it out of the structures. Because once you get structures involved, um, it's a game changer for what happens. So your fire department did very well in a challenging time when everybody was sleeping at four thirty in the morning. And I would, uh, really enjoy, um, taking any questions or anything that we can clear up if you, uh, would like.
Any questions from the council? Steve?
Just a comment. I live on Malibu Knowles and one of my, my wife got up around quarter to five, smelled smoke. So we were watching the fire from my house. You guys did a hell of a job. I mean, that wind was blowing. From where I sat, I saw those sparks going all over the place and I figured there was going to be a lot of damage down there. So I don't know how you did it, but you did a magnificent job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other, uh, comments or questions for the Drew Smith, for the captain? Okay. Well, thank you, Drew.
I just, I, I also would just like to thank Chief Smith. We have so much respect for the work you do and, um, we know it was a huge incident and it could have been turned out much, much worse. So I just want to thank you.
If I could take, uh, thirty more seconds, one thing that, um, is always comes up is why was a red flag not issued? So the National Weather Service is the authority behind issuing a red flag, but they don't do that alone. They talk to their cooperators, which is the fire agencies. And we, before we know there is a significant weather event, we communicate. And so a red flag was not issued. And just remember, you don't need a red flag to have a significant fire. There's a lot of factors that go into, deeming a red flag. And besides the weather component that needs to be there, also the fuels components need to be there. And so that's why I did not warrant a red flag day, but we knew we had a high risk day. So when we have high risk days, even though there's not a red flag issued, your fire department staffs appropriately and communicates the risk and we have an internal plan in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, Paul, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to add my name to those who thank you because it was at five in the morning when the phone started ringing and the wind was howling where I was. I, I thought we were in serious trouble and I really appreciate you saving our bacon.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce?
Yeah, same here. I want to, I want to echo our thanks. Um, I also live on, in the Knowles and was watching the fire from my balcony the whole time. I was amazed because I went, we went outside to see if I could smell smoke and could not because the wind was blowing in the opposite direction. But the wind was blowing really, really hard. Is there a, and I was impressed that the helicopter was going back and forth and, um, dousing the fire. Is there a point at which you wouldn't have been able to do that? Because I was very impressed that the helicopter was up there handling things and I thought it couldn't in really strong winds.
So, so one thing about, uh, your fire organization is we fly Black Hawk helicopters and they can take tremendous, um, weather. And so one thing that when wind speeds get over thirty-five miles an hour, that's when we lose our fixed wing aircraft, which is a, um, you know, the, the retardant dropping planes. But our organization flies the multi-mission aircraft and it's at the pilot's discretion whether they're going to fly that aircraft. And we rarely, rarely get shut down because of weather. That's all based upon the pilot's discretion. And your pilots that you have are the best in the business.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Drew. We really appreciate it.
You can miss the mayor.
Okay. Next speaker.
Your next speaker is Mark Bowdy.
Hey all, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
All right. Well, let's start with some positives. Uh, Mikey and Karen, I wanted to thank the two of you for taking the time out of your lives to meet with Judge Carter on the exposures that all cities have on the homelessness issue and what the best solutions are that can protect the city. You know, your willingness to drive and meet him during a pandemic to learn what happens to cities that do nothing or which try to evict the homeless, it's, it's critically important. And it's what we want, hope for and expect from our essentially volunteer unpaid city council persons. And, and we need that curiousness. We need you guys to leave the bubble known as Malibu and go out and see how other cities are handling it so that we're on the progressive front end of protecting our city. Um, anybody who suggests that that's improper uh, or that you shouldn't be doing that is mistaken. Keep doing it. Also, in a surprise, I want to throw a compliment to Bruce. Bruce, I thank you for agreeing and reframing the debate that if it is wise to build an ASL, that it should go in the parking lot behind City Hall. I drove Harbor Vista Drive in City Hall's parking lot yesterday and the high bluff and the contoured slopes of the cliff above that City Hall parking lot are far enough apart that I think the handful of homeowners, there may be ten of them on that street. I think they wouldn't even hear or even see much from an ASL built there. I did want to share three concerns that sort of everyone I know in Malibu is talking about, to the extent they're willing to talk about city council, which many of them are not. And I'm sort of spread across the city because I own three homes in the city. The first is a concern that we're not getting enough done and that, and I know that you guys are new to each other, but we do need you to start working as a team. Two, there's a concern that Bruce, in the first sixty days, has potentially created a lawsuit involving the city manager. At the last meeting, he said, if the county sheriff won't enforce my no camping ordinance or our existing ordinance, we should sue LA County. And then I witnessed a cross examination of a La Paz developer and a Latham land use lawyer that appeared to me to be designed to trigger another lawsuit. I can tell you safely that LA County, which has more revenue and litigation capacity than forty states in the country, that if you listen to advice as bad as you got from Bruce at the public hearing and you jump off a cliff and you sue, do not follow that legal advice. Do not get embroiled in lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next.
Our next speaker is Scott Dietrich.
Thank you. And, uh, good evening, Mayor Pearson and council. And first a shout out to our firefighters. They did a great job. You know, as I listened to the speakers at the last regular council meeting, I was stunned by the personal attacks. This vitriol doesn't have any place in Malibu. It's too bad that those attacking councilmen Silverstein didn't notice that at that meeting and at the special homeless meeting last week, each vote by the council was unanimous. But as I thought about this, it was bothering me. Why would an attorney from Pacific Palisades regurgitate untrue, untrue rumors generated during the campaign as attack ads? And why would normally reason folks engage in such personal attacks? But as I thought about it, I realized that this slander had to be orchestrated, planned in effect to cancel the last council election. To be clear, Bruce and Steve ran on a platform to oust city manager Feldman and city attorney Hogan. The voters overwhelmingly supported this effort. There were clear reasons why a majority in our city wanted change. During the Woolsey fire, Riva failed to support our citizens. She likes to say she didn't cause the fire, but she abandoned City Hall, which was never in danger and kept it shut for weeks while Pepperdine, closer to the fire, sheltered in place. She then stood with the fire chiefs who bragged at how great a job they'd done and to disparage those who stayed behind and fought the flames and saved their neighbors' homes. And that includes Mikey. She even sided with those who stopped supplies from being brought in to support those brave individuals who remained. Then the so-called repopulation was inexcusably delayed so that Edison and the cable companies wouldn't be inconvenienced. An apology would have gone a long way. The main issue, however, is perceived favoritism and the obvious fact that our city manager has often thwarted the will of the council and our citizens by undermining council's directives. And this includes obstructing the Rhodent, Rhodent aside ban and by withholding key information limits to short-term rentals. When Mr. Silverstein was elected and requested basic information from Riva, she fought him at every step and would not provide the documents all of you have a right to examine. Consequently, Bruce went public. Now Riva claims a hostile workplace and demands a huge settlement, but this is a direct, a direct result of her own actions. In any normal workplace, the moment an employee hires an attorney and charges hostile workplace, the person is escorted out the door.
Uh, that's your time.
So let's get to it.
Go.
Our next speaker is Lloyd Ahern.
Good evening, uh, council members. Uh, my name is Lloyd Ahern and about a week and a half ago, the council had a great meeting on homelessness. And at that meeting, uh, Lieutenant Braden from the Lost Hill Station suggested that we should have an ordinance that would, um, patrol the private property in the hills above Malibu. Like for instance, where I live in Las Tunas, there's, it's all private property. It goes through, it goes through Malibu City and into the county and it's full of, um, opportunities for mischief and fire. So having that, having thought of what he said and then a little bit into the meeting, but maybe two hours in, council member Steve Euring, you know, kind of brought it up again. And I went, oh, I got to talk to Steve because he's, we're on the same wavelength. So I spoke to Steve and he said he was going to do some investigation on it and really was looking forward to doing it. So what I think is we should have what Lieutenant Braden said. We have a council member who's, um, already tuned into it. I think it's a, just a, let's pursue this. We must, uh, we've got a lieutenant from the, the headquarters. We have a council person and that will help us get this done and let's do it. And, uh, I look forward to hearing Steve's comments on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Our next speaker is Scott Jacobs.
Hang on. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Scott.
Yeah, there we go. How are you guys? First, I wanted to say, uh, thank you for everyone who was involved with the, uh, the speed humps on Doom Drive and Fern Hill. It, it's just done an amazing, um, safety concern, rectifying what I believe is a, a pretty big safety hazard on these couple of streets here on the point with the reserve coming into popularity that's come into in the pandemic even before then. But I, I, I got probably eighty percent signatures in my petition. And again, the, 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 the night and day difference between Doom Drive and, and Fern Hill and Birdview now is, it's unbelievable. So I, I was just hoping to try to get, I know there's a lot of stuff going on, but this is pretty important and passionate. I've got neighbors that are afraid to go out and get their mail. People are driving sixty miles an hour down the street and it's, it's super dangerous. So, uh, those speed humps are effective. Uh, I, I, I just. I just, I'm pleading with you guys to look methodically into this to see if there's a way we can get this in approved and possibly maybe even done before summer or by summer. Maybe I'm a little optimistic, but, you know, I would implore and beg and plead for the safety of our residents on this street. It's really, it's really gotten out of hand. And that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to say. And thank you for hearing me and listening to what I have to say.
Thank you, Scott.
Our next speaker is Lonnie Gordon.
Mute. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Lonnie.
Great. Good evening. It's so nice hearing from the community tonight. I really appreciate everyone's input and that they're involved in different issues. So hello, Mayor Mikey, council members and staff. You've heard from me before. I'm here representing Malibu for Safe Tech, and I want to give you a quick physics primer before I tell you what I'm going to tell you. This small cell issue is very time-sensitive for all of us. I'm sure you know our bodies are made from cells. Cells are made from molecules, and molecules are made from atoms. Atoms are electric and magnetic. We are electromagnetic beings. The body is a complicated electronic machine. These cell sites and their frequencies have been scientifically proven to negatively affect our bodies in a myriad of ways. Now, the planning commission gave the recommendations last Monday for the proposed WCF ordinance and resolution. And this important and time-sensitive issue has really been put off long enough. This was originally scheduled for January 19th and wasn't heard until March 1st. Pushing this off until the April 12th council meeting is taking a very precious time. Applications will come in between now and then, and they will not benefit from the necessary updates that we needed to have in place months ago, especially as it pertains to the fire and safety requirements that can help prevent unnecessary fire risks, like the one that the, I don't know if it was the captain or chief spoke about, Drew. We're asking that the site be placed on the next agenda. We've repeated over and over and over that we do not want this technology in residential Malibu or near schools, playgrounds, and open spaces. It's too late for the schools and the children in West Malibu, unfortunately. But we ask you to please move this process along and keep your residents safe. Please put the WCF ordnance on the March 22nd agenda. Can we do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi there, can you hear?
Hi, Joe. I can hear you.
How are you all? I just want to say firstly, but we greatly appreciate your report about the fire last weekend from Captain Drew Smith. We greatly appreciate our firefighters here in Malibu and so happy they're protecting us while we're sleeping. I just wanted to mention, I noticed at the last planning commission meeting that they were allowing minutes to be donated to speakers, and it did not cause a lot of confusion or issues. So I was wondering when this can happen for city council meeting. And I also want to comment on how well the last couple of city council meetings have gone, and it's understandable with the new council, everyone's personalities clashing and differences in opinion, but we are all glad that you're all, each of you were elected and hope you can all continue to work together for the greater good of Malibu and its vision and mission statement. And I just want to do one last thank you to Mayor Mikey for arranging to talk to the Pathways Housing for CEO. In the late 80s, this organization did a randomized control trial in Harlem for the chronically homeless with mental illness. And after five years, they had an 85% housing retention rate, and they used scattered housing, and I believe it was paid through disability payments. It's a worthwhile program to pursue and glad it's being followed up on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe.
Our next speaker is Melanie Godsward.
Hi, good evening, council members.
Hi, Melanie.
Based on the school district separation presentation that was made earlier, I'm a longtime community member, a past PTA president, I'm a former AMPS treasurer, and I'm also a former parent of the Santa Monica, Malibu, Unibird School District. And I want to say thank you to everybody who's worked so hard on this issue to get to the point that we're at, especially the speakers who gave the presentation earlier. It's taken many, many years of hard work, and this is not the first time we've tried to succeed. It is well past time that we move on with this. We have tried diplomacy. We've negotiated, but no matter what we do, no matter what case we present, we are still here under control of a school district in another city with almost no voice or representation and no sign that they would ever willingly agree to let us go. We're basically hostages. All we want is local control. The reason we became a city in the first place, we want the right to run our schools for our own kids as we see fit. A strong community benefits from having strong schools. Ask any real estate agent, what attracts families to a community? They come for the schools. I fully support the city's efforts to force this issue now. Too much time has already passed. I'd like to point out that my daughter was in sixth grade when we started AMPS, and she's now halfway through her undergraduate studies. The time has just, it flies by, it will continue. We will go on like this for more generations if we don't force their feet to the fire and wrap this up now. So I support everything we're doing to take this to Laco. Please stay strong, keep pursuing this, and know that this is something the community really wants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie.
Our next speaker would be Stacy Rouse, but I don't see her in the meeting, so we'll hear from David Kramer.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, David.
Okay. Thank you, city council, for your time and energy to give our city. Thank you also to the school separation task force. I am David Kramer, a 33-year resident of Malibu, and my son went to Malibu School, graduating in 2007. During that time, I was very involved in school volunteering. My questions and comments are on school separation. I know you covered a lot in this, in your presentation earlier, but my preparation, my statement here are pre-prepared, so I'm going to go on with them. I would like to get the printouts that were presented, and perhaps you can put them in our local papers. So here are my comments. What are your current, what are the current hurdles and how will we get around them? Can we provide detailed proof of the numbers and how Santa Monica will be better off without Malibu, including Santa Monica numbers that include their sales tax, city contribution, bond money, parcel money, et cetera? What will be Malibu's property tax and other contributions so we can be our own district? I would love to see the numbers. What bothers me is if Santa Monica residents need to vote on separation. With 85% of the population, how do we get them to vote for separation? In Malibu Times, Article 215 included, and 21A, that included 10 questions answered originally by the Santa Monica superintendent without Malibu input. The Malibu Times has informed and experienced Malibu representatives to answer the same question. Very important. Can, should these Malibu responses be published on the Santa Monica website and newspapers? What can Malibu citizens do to move this forward? Give letters to whom and main talking points. Time span to get this done has taken so long, and Malibu has been taken advantage of. Last, I hope special education students are well taken care of with our Malibu district. We would like to know how. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Our next speaker is Howard Rudsky.
Good evening.
Hi, Howard.
Hey, Mikey. First, I wanted to give a huge shout out to the fire department. They're amazing, amazing individuals. God, what they do on a daily basis is amazing, so thank you. Second, I'm sure all the council people are aware now of the letter the MRCA sent asking to be informed whenever there's talk about putting together an oversight watchdog committee containing a lawyer and other people. It just shows that they're very concerned that the whole community is now aware of what's going on. It's not a Sycamore Park issue, it's a Malibu issue. And I think the more people start to talk about it, the more concerned they're going to get. And something I picked up off the Public Safety Commission the other day, I was listening to the sheriff talk. And, and I'm just curious, when Malibu that pays for the sheriff has to patrol the MRCA lots at the trailheads where the break-ins are, and we take a sheriff's car off the highway for an hour or so to deal with all of those, because the sheriff alluded that he doesn't believe MRCA patrols their own lots like they're supposed to, what does that cost Malibu? And there's probably a lot of other things like that, that Joe's costing Malibu quite a bit of money that we just don't see or think about. I think that's something we need to think about because everyone should be held accountable, citizens, government agencies, et cetera. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Howard.
Our next speaker is Arnold Bernstein.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Arnold. Are you there? I can hear you.
Hello?
Oh, I can hear you, Arnold.
Okay. Thank you, council members. I have a home on Tuna Beach, Las Tunas Beach, which Lloyd Ahern was talking about, and I have a unique problem that the city council should be made aware of. Quick background, within the 30-some-odd years I lived on the beach, we had a murder of Donna Hudson, although it was never solved. Obviously, it all pointed to the homeless, which may or may not be true. Several years later, there was a murder in Tuna Canyon by a homeless man because they captured him. The homeless have become a tremendous problem. My particular house had a homeless man living underneath. The city tried to help me to no avail to get rid of him. I signed the documents with the sheriff's department. We still couldn't get rid of him. Part of the problem was a fence that had been breached that belonged to either Caltrans or to the gas company. The city tried with me to get either of them, particularly the gas company, to fix it, and they took no responsibility. I finally put in my own fence, at which point my phone operator at the gate was smashed with a rock. I let it go. Further down, when the fence went in, somebody threw a rock through my window, which will be repaired this week. I then hired somebody to remove everything from under my house. The next event, my phone operator was smashed again. Each time, I was denied access to my own home. I posted a sign for a reward, and suddenly I started getting calls and hangups starting at four in the morning. The homeless living across the street in the hills have become a problem, both for the fire department, the sheriff's department, and the homeowners. The properties are an attractive nuisance, the same as an abandoned house with a filled swimming pool. That's what they are. I would like the city to look into, one, charging the owners for the cleanup and the policing, and, two, some ordinance that requires them to hire security. I have hired security at my own expense because I'm vulnerable. I may even be at physical harm, vulnerable to physical harm, which I'll deal with. However, the city needs to examine this from a standpoint of what we can do to get the property owners. Now, keep in mind, these property owners are 400 or 500 acres. That's three-quarters of a mile squared. It's an enormous amount of property. They can well afford to patrol it as we're patrolling our property. I want to thank you for the time and hope you will consider this.
Thank you, Arnold.
Mayor Pearson, since this item was called, we've had one late sign up. Would you like to hear their comment?
That's fine.
Our next speaker will be Bill Sampson.
Are you there, Bill?
Bill, you should be seeing a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Sorry. Okay. Am I on now?
Yep, I can hear you, Bill.
Okay. I, and I think probably most of the citizens, got an email from the city today describing hundreds of cars on Pacific Coast Highway and saying that someone at the city had coordinated with the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. Well, that this goes on on Sundays is hardly a secret. The event in question was called Malibu Autobahn, and they've had them here before. And I did, I did see one thing being done. I saw the notorious motorcycle officer pull over a guy in a Corolla. The Corollas aren't very loud. They're not even all that fast. But I don't know what the city, I don't know if the city's willing to do anything about it. It's a racetrack out here. You know it, we know it. It happens every weekend. It's going to happen all summer. Hot weather's coming. Noisy, fast cars are going. The problem isn't car clubs. I happen to belong to several. I don't drive like that. One of the cars can't go like that, the Woody's. You've seen them. We have a Christmas parade. I don't think we caused you guys a lot of trouble. These, however, were Aston Martins and up. One of the sponsors was Galpin Motors. Bert Bachmann owns two houses down on Sea Level Drive. He's a good guy. I don't agree with him politically, but I still view him as a friend. I would think that the mayor could call up Bert, call up Galpin Motors, ask to speak to Bert or his son Beau, who is now running the show, and say, quit sponsoring races in Malibu. I assure you, Bert has worked very hard to have a good name. I mean, I think of him as a right-winger, and I still think he's a friend of mine. You know, we remain friends, and he's done a lot to have a good name. He's a good member of the community. They don't come over here much anymore. When Beau was little, his son, I fixed his bicycle almost every Saturday. And if you call them and say, hey, you are affiliated with something that is annoying your fellow citizens of Malibu, they might do something. I guarantee you, Bert didn't get where he is by having, by being ignored when he asked his people to work for him. They, they will do what he asks. And if they're doing something that's causing trouble, Mr. Mayor, maybe you ought to call him. He will respect you as mayor. I mean, he'll like me, he'll have some new jokes for me, but I'm
Bill, that's your time.
I'm really not much here, but he might appreciate a call from the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I still don't see Stacy Rouse in the meeting, so that concludes public comment on this item.
All righty. Thank you very much. Then we are on to, to be a commission committee or city manager update.
Good evening, mayor. Thank you. Steve, did you have a question? I saw you raised your hand.
You're muted.
I wasn't sure who was first. You go first.
I'll go first, then you can go. How about that? So, good evening, everybody. Want to start with our update on COVID-19. In Malibu, we have 376 reported positive cases, and our death rate stands now at seven. In Los Angeles County, they are reporting 880 new cases today on their dashboard, and the positivity rate in Los Angeles County is now at 2.4%. So So definitely has declined considerably, um, from the high, um, at twenty, when, twenty percent, when we were seeing so many cases. Um, the vaccination, um, is being offered more widely and I'm hearing anecdotally that it's much easier to get a appointment, so. Bert, everybody to keep trying to do that, if you're in one of the tiers that is now able to get vaccinations. Um, if you're having trouble, certainly call the city, um, and we'll be happy to help you. And we also have dial right services for our senior residents, uh, who need vaccination. Uh, currently, there is no vaccination site, uh, in Malibu. Um, but again, we're happy to help, uh, so call City Help if you need help with that. Um, our rebuild update, right now, we have two hundred and ninety-seven single-family homes that have been approved to rebuild through the planning department. We've issued a hundred and seventy building permits and as of Friday, we had twenty-four homes that had been completed. Um, I did want to touch briefly, uh, Mr. Kramer, we'll send you a link to the information on the school district separation that's on. The city's website, um, and for anybody else who is interested, we do have all of the information, um, timeline, historical information and other documents. Uh, so encourage people to look that up on the city's website and also you're more than welcome to call my office if we can answer any questions. Um, as it is a pretty complicated, convoluted, uh, project, but more than happy to walk the community through that. Um, I did want to touch on the issue about the car clubs, we've certainly seen an increase, uh, throughout the entire pandemic. Um, but most recently, over the last, uh, three or four weekends. Um, and I am in continual contact with the station on weekends to make sure that. Uh, we are doing everything we can to keep those vehicles moving along. The city has not permitted any car clubs or events. Um, and is not sponsoring or encouraging those, uh, at any city property or, uh, any private property. And those property owners, um, whose, uh, areas are getting overrun, have been very cooperative with the city, so. I know it's definitely a nuisance and we're aware of that. Um, and then just a couple of things upcoming on Wednesday, March tenth at six P M. We are going to be having a community meeting to discuss the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Um, and that will be, uh, virtual and there will be a time for questions and input from the community during that meeting. And then on Thursday, March eleventh at five o'clock, there will be a joint Public Safety and Public Works Commission meeting, so I just wanted to let everybody know about that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Riva, um, Steve.
Uh, thank you, Mikey, thank you, Riva. Just, I got an email from my wife today that said that they're giving COVID shots at the CDS in Malibu. Uh, and she, right now, they're booked, but, I mean, she's trying to get us in there, but so that's, that's good news, I mean, you know, having it here.
That's great news, thank you, I hadn't heard that, so, good to know.
Yeah, this, that's, my wife knows stuff that I don't know, that's why. Uh, I sat through a Clean Power Alliance, uh, board meeting this week, they are an amazing company. Uh, I mean, you know, they, they sort of started out as a startup, they're now going through puberty, trying to get their program put in place. And they do excellent staff reports, I think the management team is great, so I, I look forward to sitting through more of those things and learning how they're going to grow. Uh, short-term rentals, there was a response that the Coastal Commission asked us for regarding more information. On our proposal for short-term rentals, did we ever get that out, we know?
Um, so we are working on that, uh, Richard and I spoke about it today. Um, there's actually a quite a bit of information, uh, that needs to be compiled. Um, so I can, uh, get you the details on that, but we do have our consultant Joyce Parker Bozelinski. Who is concentrating on compiling all of that, um, unfortunately, it was quite a bit of work that they asked for, so it's taking some time.
Any kind, any kind of a tentative target date to get it out, do you think?
Um, Richard, are you, uh, able to jump on and maybe answer that question? If you want to finish your comments, we can get Richard to answer that.
Okay, yeah, just, well, the other thing, and I got an email from somebody, and I can't remember who was. That said, when you look at some of the, uh, host or the. Organizations that are trying, uh, to promote short-term rentals, they're supposed to have a permit number on there, and they're saying some. Somebody said the permit numbers are not showing up, I don't know, take a look at that, I don't know if that's going on.
We will look, look to that, and if you could send a link, if you have any more information of the specific website.
Yeah, if I could find that email I got, I will send you something, because I, I remember I read it and I pushed it to the side and didn't do anything else with it.
Of course, and I see Richard's on now, if he'd like.
Oh, Richard, there you go.
Good evening, Councilmember Euring. Uh, the two big issues with the Coastal Commission letter were they wanted a consistency analysis. And also data on the, the stock, so to speak, of what's in the city. And what we needed to complete was looking at the. Obtaining all the information from the permitting process to, to build up that data. So as, uh, the city manager mentioned, I will be meeting with our consultant this week. And ideally, we'll wrap this up and try to get it out by the end of the month or early April back to the Coastal Commission.
Cool, thank you very much. Uh, Lloyd A. Hearn, now, I've known Lloyd ever since I moved into Malibu, and I don't think we've ever agreed on anything. So Lloyd, you both must be getting old. Uh, but I followed up this on a phone conversation, I did call Lieutenant Braden. Uh, and I, I talked to him about the, the proposal of having the, the owners look at their property. And he's taking a look at other cities where they may be doing that. To help me come up with some potential language of what we might be able to use to do that. Uh, and he's going to get back to me on that one. I was going to contact our city attorney, John Connie, and sort of take him through the same question. But we've got John doing a lot of stuff, so I figured, let me see, hear back from Braden first, and then I'll get John, but I do intend on following up with that. And see if there is some way that we can get the owners to give us a little bit of help and trying to keep those properties clear of the homeless that are, that are currently living there. My last item. At the last budget meeting, uh, or the administrative finance meeting, whatever it was, we, or the last budget meeting, I guess it was, we talked about adding a third sheriff's car to the evening. Uh, patrolling Malibu, uh, and I'm not sure when that's going to start. But what I would like to do is, I don't, I don't know who coordinates with the sheriff. But if we're going to do that, I would like to find a way, did we get some information back? That says, what are we getting in return for the dollars that we're spending? Uh, you know, that, that we're taking taxpayer dollars, we're, we're investing them in the sheriff. And I think the taxpayers would like to know that they're actually getting a benefit from the investment on those dollars. So I, you know, I don't know who negotiates with the sheriff, how they do that, I don't want to come up with a program of quotas. Because I know the sheriff doesn't want to do that, and I agree, but I would sure like to get information back that says if we do this. You know, what are they doing for us, what kind of results are we getting? And let me suggest one other thing, I, if, if. We've got a Public Safety Commission that is doing one hell of a job. I mean, these guys are out there, two, three o'clock in the morning, driving around, looking at what's going on. And we may want to consider tasking them. With the process of sitting down with the sheriff. And negotiating what kind of information we're going to get back regarding this third car. Because they know where this third car should go. They've got a pretty good perspective of what should, they should be doing in the evening. And, you know, we've got some talented people up there, you've got Chris Frost, you've got Tina Gibbs, you've got Doug Stewart. Uh, and it, it may be worthwhile giving them the task to come up with. This, having them figure out the best way we can get responses back and using some of the talents we have, so. Rest of the city council, think about that, I don't know if we could do that, but it sure seems to me that if I got smart people, I'd like to be able to use them.
Steve, I could just jump in on that, um, when we authorized that additional car, you did ask for some statistics back, and that has been. Uh, communicated by me to the captain at Lost Hill Station. Um, he said that he would definitely provide us with feedback on what was happening with that additional car in the evening. Um, he did caution me that it may take a bit of time to get good data, just because we're not in our busy summer months, um, but that, that was something. Uh, he would certainly provide to us, we do get regular, uh, statistical reports from the station that are shared, both with the commission and the council. And, um, Susan Duennius, right now, is preparing an item to go to the Public Safety Commission that will have some additional data. Um, and give some, get some feedback from the commission on where to allocate those resources, so. Um, all of what you've asked for is in motion right now, um, and I will certainly, uh, make sure that we're communicating that to the station.
Cool, I mean, just, you know, and just be careful, because, you know, we got the V O Ps, we, we know what the V O Ps are doing at the end of every week, and what they've accomplished. Should be able to get the same kind of information, the sheriff, we just got to be, you know, press a little bit, make sure we did it, but I'm sure you guys will help us get that stuff, Mikey, that's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Um. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Along with, uh, Chief Smith and everybody at L A County Fire, uh, that we, um, have already addressed, I want to thank. Uh, everybody at Lost Hills who responded, our V O Ps, I know were there. Right from the outset. And I want to thank the city manager and our media information officer for getting so much information out and so quickly. Um, thank you to our school district separation team. It's a long haul, but, uh, we've got a great team now, so. I have every reason to, uh, feel more and more confident about our quest for justice. Um, as far as what I've been doing since the last meeting, uh. We had a policies review ad hoc committee meeting, I attended an L A, uh, L A County Division, uh, conference for the league. Uh, participated in the city's annual, uh, youth commission government summit. And, um, I attended another league, uh, general membership meeting. Uh, and then we are working, obviously, on school district separation with the ad hoc. Um, as far as our public comments tonight, Scott Jacobs, if you're still here. Um, you and I have been emailing each other about, uh, Birdview for a while. And I don't know if Rob DeBeau, uh, is able to comment on, um, the traffic study that's required to, um.
I'll, I'll jump in for Rob, um, he actually lost power at his house, and so he's only on his cell phone, so we're. Uh, trying to keep him, uh, preserving his battery until, uh, the consent calendar comes up. But we do need to conduct a traffic study anytime, um, uh, there's going to be a change that would require a new stop sign or speed humps or whatnot, and so. Uh, he is looking and working on all of that, uh, where we have the budget this fiscal year. And if we aren't able to accommodate it, it will be added to the budget for next fiscal year for Point Two, Maria.
Okay, thank you, Riva, yeah, um, and I know, also, living on Point Two, and we have definitely had an increase in traffic. Since the pandemic started and, uh, just like the rest of the city, we're seeing speeding and people parking in creative places and a lot of things. Um. Howard Redski, thank you for speaking up, uh, not only for Sycamore Park, but for the entire community. We can't let our guard down, that's, that's the first thing I will say. Um, and yes, there is an impact, I agree, uh, as Lieutenant Braden said, with, um, access points. Uh, created by the MRCA and things that are happening in our city and to our neighborhoods. Um, Arnold Bernstein, I'm very sorry to hear, uh, everything you told us tonight. Um. I don't know about the legality of charging owners for patrol, for cleanup. Uh, fencing off, uh, encampments. Um, but, uh, you know, we all know that Lost Tunas Canyon area has been extremely concerning and the beach as well. Uh, Riva, were you going to say something about that?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to jump in, that we do, um, invoice property owners after we've done a cleanup. For example, we did a very major cleanup at the Tuna Canyon in that area. And, um, due to the fact that we felt that there was a public safety risk, uh, we just took it upon the city to do that cleanup, which was incredibly extensive. But we have billed the property owner for those costs, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, okay, that's it for me, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Excuse me, lost my voice there for a minute. Um, Bruce, would you like to go?
Sure, thank you. So first of all, it's always great to hear from the residents at these meetings, as well as during the weeks, directly by phone and by email, um, I learn a lot from every conversation. Uh, I continue to communicate with the residents about their needs. Uh, the topics that have arisen most, uh, both in writing and over the phone. Are consistent with what we hear tonight, public safety, including fire and transient indigent population. And the intersection of the two. Uh, and fortunately, although, although, well, and as well as issues pertaining to S C E and the telecom industry's. Use of utility poles and wires, they're, they're both a source of fire danger, the, the telecom and the, the transient indigence. Um, the last fire, as we've heard, most likely was a electrical fire caused by S C E. Um, the Tuna Canyon fires and some others, however, we know were from transients. Um. And we need, and that's some. We take a look at, I, as far as the private vacant property, I, I think we're going to have to legislate the solution, I mean, it's what, we can try to call it a nuisance, I'm just not, I'm not sure it is. But we, we definitely need to look at a legislative solution to that. Um, the other, another big issue is reckless drivers on P C H, especially loud vehicles that are speeding and are racing, as occurred this weekend. Um, I will be speaking with, um, Captain Viscera and Lieutenant Braden on Wednesday morning about that and some other safety issues that we've been batting around. Um, I don't expect we'll accomplish anything concrete on Wednesday when we speak, but it's good to continue to engage in dialogue. And brainstorm ideas to see where we might end up. And we'll also be talking about the no camping ordinance, and in connection with that, I'll be speaking with John Cuddy tomorrow morning. To see what we can do about, um, finding ways to make the draft, uh, one that he can feel comfortable recommending. Um, Big Rock Mesa is a concern that I hear a lot about, um, I was invited to come take a tour of the areas where people had, um, seen cracking. Um, you know, I, I commend those on council who've been out there and feel safe enough to, um. Be doing things within the community, I'm still staying home until, um, I'm vaccinated. Um, another big issue that comes up, obviously, dealing with the MRCA, um, I had some comments about that last week, um, I think we need to follow up on that, whether we can. Or can't use our, um, strategists to deal, to, to see what help can be provided at the state level. Um, and, and lastly, an issue that comes up, and this is consistent with Scott's. Comments this evening, why the city manager continues to be in place despite her lawyer's letter. Indicating her difficulty performing her job, setting forth a request for negotiated severance, and threatening to sue the city. Um, I also had an opportunity to have a Zoom conference with the, um, city's independent auditors. And that was very educational, I'm going to talk about that in a few moments. Um, during the homeless meeting, um, there was mention of a bill, A B thirteen seventy-two. And it was said, uh, that if this passes. Every city in California would be required to provide shelter for every single homeless or unhoused person in the jurisdiction. Um, and in fact, that's what the bill says, I'd be shocked if anything remotely like that bill were to pass. As it literally would require that California cities provide shelter to every homeless person in the world who crosses into our state. Um, but in any event, I just wanted to make the point, the bill would apply to every city in the state. Um, it would not provide any benefit to any city that has already taken action of any sort. So it's not like we can do things to avoid that bill, if that bill's, if that bill were to come to pass. That bill were to come to pass, and we would have to deal with it, but there's nothing that we can do. That's going to help us if and when that bill were to come, and as I said, I doubt it will. And also, the bill notes that the California Constitution requires the state to fund expenses compelled by the state. So that would be an issue that has to be resolved as well, which is another reason it's highly unlikely to pass. Um, I spoke with the auditors, now last, at the last meeting, I asked if the auditors review contracts. And invoices to determine whether the invoices are pursuant to the contracts. Uh, and that's something I've asked about in connection with the warrant from time to time as well, and I've been assured each time. That the auditors look at this issue, at least on a randomized basis. Um, that was actually last week or two weeks ago, at two hours thirty-six minutes and two seconds. Through two hours thirty-seven minutes and fifteen seconds, I was told. Everyone was told, the public was told, that the auditors do look at the contracts and confirm on a random basis that the payments that. Are charged to the city and paid by the city are consistent with the contracts. I spoke to the auditors on Friday, and they told me outright, that's not the case, they do not get to that granular level. Um, they look at the invoices to see that the amount that was charged is the amount that was paid, not more, not less. But they do not look to confirm that the amount that was charged is the amount that was supposed to be charged, so. That's just, uh, that's a gap, I don't know whether we need to have the auditors look at those things or not, but I just wanted to make clear that I'd asked about that, and the answer I got was incorrect. The auditors also confirmed that they have no way of testing to determine if any employee were to receive any side benefit from anyone. And that the city has a responsibility to inform the auditors if the city learns of any such activity. Now, paragraph twenty-eight of Jefferson Wagner's affidavit. States that he was told, while he, he was told that a city employee had been caught receiving benefits. states that he was told, while he, he was told that a city employee had been caught receiving benefits for providing city benefits, and that that employee was discharged quietly. I don't know whether that's true, that that occurred or not, but that is what Jefferson Wagner said in his affidavit occurred. I asked him this week how he learned of that, who told him. And what he told me was that while he was mayor, he was told that by the city manager. And again, I can't vouch for the veracity of what Jefferson said, but that's what he told me. So I would like to know, was a member of the staff or an employee of the city discharged after being found to be engaging in any impropriety? And if so, why was that not reported to the auditor? I truly need to understand that. So I don't know if we can get an answer to that now, but that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Bruce. All right, we'll have Paul go next.
Thank you very much, Mikey. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the presentation on school district separation or unification, as it's inversely called. And I really appreciated the people who have been working on it for so many years, and I'm glad that it looks like we're making progress. I also was in a meeting with Arson Watch about a program that the sheriffs are doing to give us access to actual police radios, which would enable us, the Arson Watch, to actually help the police more, more positively than they can now. And one of the thoughts I had while we were sitting here watching this is people talking about the racing in the middle of the night on PCH. It would be easy for a couple of Arson Watch people who were so motivated to sit in a location coming into Malibu and then alert the deputies that they're coming and make some good use of those, that extra car. So free, free labor is wonderful, and we, we all want the same thing. And I'm willing to stay up late to do it. Anyway, and I was in a meeting today about the Clean Power Alliance in a discussion about that. And a lady from Calabasas said that the Clean Power Alliance has just did a 10% increase, but there are two Southern California Edison 10% increases coming up between now and summer. So we're looking at a 30% bump. So that's, if it's true, that's not a very good thing. So and I'm looking forward to the rest of the agenda tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. I want to thank the public speakers as well. Always hear some interesting things for sure. Scott Jacobs, I agree with you on Birdview. We've been talking about that for a while. And I, once again, I am very impressed with the Doom Drive Speed Humps. I'm really, they're incredibly well done. The way they slow you down, but they're, they're still very smooth. Actually, they're really, the science on those are done perfectly from what I could tell. An excellent model compared to what's in my neighborhood, that's for sure. And Joe, talking about Pathway Housing, thank you for bringing that up. I have not yet spoken with them, but it is on my list. So thank you very much. For myself, just briefly, we have met and will meet with the Wildland Interface Fire Follower Advisory Group. And very soon, we will have a meeting with a impressive group of fire chiefs on this program and hoping to get the okay for a pilot program in Malibu where residents can be trained and, and potentially help during a wildfire event. Won't be fighting the flames up front like in a movie or anything, but still able to help. Also, I think it was last weekend, I was, or weekend before, I joined the Topanga Restoration Meeting they had on Zoom. It was a pretty good crowd of people there to talk about the restoration project in that whole area. It's pretty extensive. It's big. They're still settling on some of the details. Some of the details are pretty important details, such as whether to keep the local businesses there or whether they're out, what to do with the lagoon as far as what size it'll be, and even a proposal to slightly swing the highway inland right by the lagoon for a variety of reasons and rebuild that bridge there. So that's, it's a big project. And we had a breakout group that I was a part of, and the exciting part was when we, they put us into the breakout rooms. Myself and Joe Edmondson were the first two in ours, so we got to hang out for a while. And actually, everyone in that little group, there's four of us, we were mostly somehow, our group got focused on how people are going to park there and highway safety. Other groups seemed to be focused on other things, but we were trying to figure out in these scenarios how the parking would work, because assuming it would be quite popular, I'm guessing. And also had a meeting of the PCH Task Force. As everyone knows, and as a lot of people have spoken on tonight, the PCH is an ongoing issue. Can't think of anything major to report, but just ongoing updates on all the various projects going on PCH. Everything from the McClure Tunnel all the way out to Tranqus. Lots going on as always.
Mayor Pearson, Lieutenant Braden has raised his hand in Zoom if you wanted to hear from him.
I can see him. Thank you for pointing that out. I was just going to finish my remarks and ask Mr. Braden, and my remarks, I think, oh, I do have a couple more remarks. Hang on, James. Yeah, the COVID vaccine is a good, good thing to point out, Steve, that they put that out Friday midday, sold out instantly, I guess. And so that was, that's great. I'm really glad you announced that. Maybe Jim will speak about the third sheriff car. I have talked to Captain Becerra about that. And he, at the end of that call, he also said he would come to our meetings maybe once a month or so and, and chat about what's going on. He wants to make sure people understand that just the raw stats don't always show the impact of a car, and he wants to explain why that is. And yes, I agree with you. We have an amazing public safety commission. So talking about some of Steve's comments. And with that, Lieutenant Braden, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Wonderful.
Okay, let me get started here. As far as the public comments regarding the landowners taking some type of responsibility for policing their lands, that's them policing the lands. That's them arranging some kind of security or walking through their property to know that there's no potential problems that could develop that are going to affect the community. Steve and I are going to work together on that and try to come up with some type of solution that would have a positive impact on the community. So that's in the works. What else do we have? Chris Frost from the Public Safety Council and Doug Stewart came out the other night along with the deputies and the VOPs to observe the actions we take in the nighttime as far as vehicles parked along PCH. So Chris had, I talked to Chris the next day. He had a lot of positive comments on, on the activity. The when we had the homeless meeting the year before, we were literally in a situation where these motorhomes were just so thick along Las Tunas Corral and other places, Suma Beach. Right now, I would estimate that almost 85% of those motorhomes have left the community. The, so it's had a positive impact. We're working together with the city and the Public Safety Council. And in the next week or two, we're going to start enforcing the restrictive large vehicle ordinance along PCH, which should mitigate a few of these holdout motorhomes in different areas that aren't affected by the no parking from 0:200 and, and also to 2:00 in the, 2:00 to 4:00 in the morning. So we're working on that. As far as the third car or extra car you put out into Malibu, that car was deployed starting March 1st. The, I will have a report. I can bring it to the council or I can bring it to the Public Safety Council, either one. The, the deputies I have in the car, there's a male and female Deputy Goddett and Deputy Medcap. They were chosen for the car because they're highly effective. Just like Steve said, we don't enforce quotas. There's a reason for that. It's against the law. What we do, the sheriff, Captain Becerra, myself, we encourage and we have deputies work for us that are proactive in law enforcement. They see the laws being broken and they enforce the law. That like the one comment that, oh, there's people racing down PCH, but he saw a Corolla stopped and like there was something wrong with that. When people say, oh, people are racing along PCH, we've had in place for the last 10 or 12 weeks special deployment on Sundays with authorization from the city manager. I have supervisor and motors or other, other regular patrol vehicles out there. Yesterday, they're already, they were already deployed. They rode approximately 36 tickets along the highway and Cross Creek area. When they say, oh, authorizing a race, it's not a race through Malibu. Do they, do a lot of these groups need to be corralled in and made sure they're observing of the traffic laws? Yes. Is it illegal for them to be there? No. So there's constitutionality in everything we do. What other comments do I have? So I'll bring a report back next month as far as the extra car. So everybody can hear about that. I'll be happy to do that. And like Bruce said, we have a meeting on Wednesday, and we'll discuss other items. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer if I can.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions for Lieutenant Braden? Steve?
Not really a question, Lieutenant. Chris Frost called me Sunday morning raving about the job you guys did Saturday night. So thank you very, very much. And Sunday, I walked through Cross Creek, and you're right, you had deputies there all over the place, and you really have calmed that place down. So that's, that's been very helpful. Thank you.
Well, I was in Malibu Sunday. My wife and I went up to Sandstone Peak up, up Yerba Uena. But we came down into Malibu and spent a few hours. And yeah, I experienced the same thing. There's a lot of people around. But we have resources in place to try to regulate it. And the one thing that, that I wanted to pass on also, don't think you can't call the Sheriff's Department if you see some car racing on PCH. We get these calls. That's the most effective way for you to handle that is to let us know. And when you do that, we have radios that we radio patrol cars and we send them calls, and they're required to follow up on these calls. So in compared to a social media platform or notifying the city manager or notifying the council person, your most direct effort, just like the gentleman referring to the Tuna Canyon stuff, Chris Frost and I talked about that, and that guy has my cellphone number. We have Frank Espinosa, who, who goes and, and problem solve homeless issues throughout Malibu. It's a continuous thing. It doesn't just go away. And one other comment, what Mikey said, I was just on the PCH Task Force meeting last week. We, we keep statistics on everything. I provided all the accident data, all the, all the site data and everything else for the activities for the quarter of October through the end of the year. The the, we do publish it every month, but I, and I do go over it in the Public Safety Council meeting every month. If, if you want anything more than that, we can talk about it. I want you all to be comfortable and know what we do. That's why I like when Chris Frost and Doug Stewart want to come out there and see what we do. We're happy to let them come out and see what we do. That's, that's the most powerful thing we can do.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yeah, yes, Steve.
Just Mike, do one more quick one. Paul, your comment on the Clean Power Alliance and the price increase. At the last budget meeting, they had not yet determined what the price increase was going to be. They intend to get to that in the next budget meeting. They are somehow tied to what Southern California Edison does with increases. They don't have any idea what Southern California's increase was, the Southern California Edison's increase was going to be. So at the moment, the information says it's a 30% increase. I don't think that's accurate based upon the board meeting that took place last week. So just for what it's worth.
All righty. Well, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar now. Do we have any members of the public wanting to pull anything?
Yes, item 3B6 has been pulled by the public.
Okay, do we have any counselors that want to pull anything? Bruce?
Just 3B2, please.
Okay, can I get a motion on the remaining items?
I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3B2 and 3B6.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein? Councilmember Silverstein?
Couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. 3B2, did you have comments, Bruce, or how did you want to proceed?
I did. I just, just a few, few short comments. Last meeting, I stated that the city attorney had confirmed to me that the city manager certification contains some inaccurate information. And the city attorney said that that wasn't quite accurate. I just wanted, on February 22nd, I received an email from the city attorney, and it says the following, I'm quoting now. "I recommend removing the last sentence of the certification since it seems to me that the city is not conducting, quote, 'an examination of source documents relating to randomly selected sample of transactions and analysis of cash flow reports,' close quote." That's what I've been asking questions about for the past month or two. And it's been confirmed to me, I believe, through the answers that were not very specific, that in fact, there is no random selected analysis as the certification repeatedly states. And that's what John now says as well. So that's the inaccurate information I was referring to. I do continue to believe that the California government code and the Malibu municipal code require a sworn affidavit of the city manager and/or a written certification that all payments are accounted for in the budget, or both, and neither is provided. And finally, as I said earlier, I've been asking over the weeks for copies of vendor contracts so that I could perform some form of my own audit, which is actually what city council is statutorily required to do, audit the warrant when it receives it. So I've been trying to conduct a random audit of the contracts to ensure that the invoices were per the contracts. And I've been criticized for that a bit. And the statement's been, well, the auditors look at that. They don't. So I think it's all of our responsibility to be checking these things. The purpose of the statutory requirement that the city council audit the payments is because we're not supposed to take the word of the city staff that the payments are appropriate. We are statutory required to audit them. So that's what I've been trying to do. Thank you. Councilmember Silverstein, you're correct. I did make that statement with regard to that last sentence, and I will, I, I am in the process of revising it, and it will come back at your next, your next council meeting as revised.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, you want to move 3B2, Bruce? I'll, I'll move it if you're done.
Oh, you can move it. I'm going to abstain like I've done the last two weeks, last two minutes.
I'll move it, Mikey.
Okay, we have a second?
Paul's second.
Can we have a roll call? Lisa, do you have anything to add first?
No, I, I just was, we had not received anything from John. So until we will, if he gives us a change, if the city attorney gives us a change to the wording, we will do that.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes, Steve.
Yes, Steve.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um three B six, authorization of judicial foreclosure for Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase One District Assessment District Number Two O One Five Dash One. Um. I don't know if we need a report, but I know we have at least one public speaker.
Yes, you have one speaker for this item, it's Craig Hill.
Okay, um Craig, let's go ahead and hear you.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody, I'll just first say uh thanks to both the Fire Department and the Sheriff for some great work recently. Um this item here is about foreclosing on five properties that haven't kept up with their payments for the wastewater district. And I know you guys will do your legal due diligence in terms of uh you you sent out letters to them once so far and we'll send out another letter. But I just wanted to double check that you'll also do some sort of ethical due diligence or due diligence or, you know, just the neighborly thing, because four of the five properties are the parcels in what's called the Malibu Colony Estates, that little mini gated community west of the Ralph's Market. And um I think my original thought was, well, maybe that's just one developer there who's changed his address and you haven't gotten a letter to him somehow. Um but I checked and those four parcels have recording dates ranging from twenty eleven to twenty nineteen, so they might actually have different owners. Um but you know, the thought is, they owe an average of four thousand bucks each roughly, and it would be a shame to see those drop through the cracks just because the communication wasn't good. I'll remind you of uh twenty years ago, there was a case where the school district slipped from public to private property because they failed to send a letter to the correct address for the Mountains Conservancy. And so the Conservancy was never notified that they could buy that public property. And instead, it went into private hands and a lot of trouble has ensued since then. So let's get this right and make sure these properties, that the notification really goes well. Um the fifth property is a three and a half acre parcel that's directly above the city's roughly two acre La Paz parcel up behind there, it's sort of landlocked. I don't imagine that anybody could build anything on it because it's zone CC. And now there's really no access to anywhere else, so that seems like a different case where maybe somebody has actually just let it slide because why even keep paying on the tax if you have no value to the property at all? But that property, just for future reference, might be useful to the city because it could add three and a half acres to the existing two acres there and about a third of it is uh roughly flat, so that single acre there, say, would be your dog park. Um or your raised bed gardens, maybe terraced up the hill or something, so um if it does end up defaulting, maybe the city wants to keep an eye on that and and see if uh if there's a lower price for it. Anyway, make sure these people really get notified and the letters aren't slipping through the cracks, thanks.
Thank you, Craig, um we're back.
There. Um we have our special counsel, Brian Forbath, with Stradling, Yucca, Carlson and Roth on this evening um who can provide some information uh to the questions that were raised and also why we're here doing this, thank you.
Okay, great, hi, Brian.
Uh good evening, Mayor Pearson, uh pleasure to be in front of you this evening. So um when the when the city issued or financed the wastewater treatment plant, um it issued two different um assessment obligations. One was a series of bonds that were sold publicly, and another was a loan that the city got from the State Water Resources Control Board. Those uh bonds and the state loan are secured by assessments on on the properties within the assessment district that was formed. As part of the security for the state and for the bond owners, there's a covenant that requires the city to foreclose on property if they don't timely pay their assessments. Here, you know, obviously proceeding with foreclosure is the last thing the city wants to do and city staff wants to do. Letters have been sent to these property owners, letters will be sent on at least one, if not more than one occasion um prior to the commencement of any foreclosure actions. We also um received notification today that two of the properties that are on the list and those are the APNs four four five eight zero eighteen dash twenty-eight and then dash zero two five have paid their taxes late and there will no longer be a requirement to um foreclose on those properties, so now we're just down to three as of today. And so um we will not, we and um the assessment engineer who the city's contracted to assist this project, will send out subsequent letters to these property owners. And we'll obviously try uh very hard to uh notify the property owners on on at least one, if not more than one occasion, to try to make sure we get a payments before we proceed with this. Thank you, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Um yes, Bruce?
Yeah, uh first of all, Craig, thanks for those comments, they were all very helpful, and Brian, yours as well. Um you know, we're not the city of Los Angeles, we're not talking about a thousand properties here. What are we doing besides for sending a letter to find out why these three properties are in arrears? I mean, I would think a phone, pick up the phone would be a better way to find out than sending a formal letter.
And I can speak to that, and I know that Rob Rob is um Rob Dubeau, who's, you know, the main sort of project lead for the wastewater treatment facility is having power issues, so I know he's been calling in, but I'll speak to that. Um he's been reaching out by phone to the property owners as well. So we're doing the formal letters because that's what we're required to do, but um we're doing all our due diligence to call people. It's a small pool of folks we're talking about, in fact, um one of them reached out today when they saw the council agenda item and uh I left a message with them and connected them with Rob, so we we're trying to handle it all that way.
Thank you.
As counsel, this is this is Robert Dubeau, I'm sorry, I'm in the dark here at my house, but uh um yeah, I I've already reached out to a few of them. Um they made reference that they are going to proceed forward on on resolving these issues and getting those um assessments paid for, so we're, so so we are working with them, I I'm pretty confident that we can get everything resolved within the next couple of weeks without going to foreclosure, but um I I'm sure that we can get this all worked out.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, well, and Paul, you had your hand up earlier?
I was just gonna speak briefly to uh to the process, the foreclosure process, but I'm I'm glad that you had an expert show up and and also mention the fact that the state of California, it's very hard to have a landlocked property because the Constitution uh assumes that when you, when the property was split, an easement was granted to make it accessible, so landlocked properties generally aren't. Thank you.
Okay, so um can we get a motion on this?
Make a motion to move it.
And Bruce, second?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. We're on to item four A, Los Angeles County Fire Code.
Yes, good evening, uh City Council. This evening, I'm bringing to you the second reading for the adoption of Los Angeles County Fire Code. Every three years, the state adopts the California Building Code Standards. The standard consists of twelve volumes under the Title Twenty-four of the California Code of Regulations. The adoption of ordinance number four eight zero will adopt by reference Title Thirty-two of Los Angeles County Code, which incorporates the twenty nineteen edition of the California Fire Code. It's important to mention, this new code does not affect our fire rebuilds or our development. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Yolanda, do we have any public speakers on this item?
You have one speaker signed up, Georgia Goldfarb, but I don't see her in the meeting.
Okay, and then we're back at council for comments or a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance four eighty, are we required to read the whole thing?
Yeah, I'm seeing a sort of a nod there from John, sort of a
And I I I can read that title for you, it's ordinance number four eighty. In order to the city of Malibu adopting by reference Title Thirty-two of the Los Angeles County Code, which incorporates the two thousand nineteen edition of the California Fire Code as amended, adopting local amendments to said code, ratifying the consolidated fire protection district of Los Angeles County's building standards contained in Title Thirty-two as amended, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
And Paul, was that you have a comment or a second?
That's a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are on to item four B, Community Development Block Grant. Disaster Recovery, can we have a report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, the item before you is the allocation of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds for Multifamily Housing. The US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, uses CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds to support recovery from presidentially declared disasters and other related efforts. These funds are appropriated through Congress and flow through the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. For the twenty eighteen disasters, which included the Camp Car Mendocino Complex and Woolsey Fires, Congress appropriated one point oh two billion dollars for the CDBG Disaster Recovery Program. The primary purpose of this funding is to address any unmet disaster-related housing needs. This funding must principally serve low and moderate income households. HCD performed an unmet needs assessment that included data from FEMA, the Small Business Administration, CAL FIRE, and the California Department of Insurance to determine the amount of need. Funds are allocated for recovery projects related to housing, infrastructure, and economic revitalization. So of that large pot um and based on that needs assessment, HCD allocated eighteen point six million dollars to the city of Malibu under the Disaster Recovery Multifamily Housing Program. So this was one small piece of that whole recovery pot. But a large piece for a city like Malibu, when you compare it to um the allocations that went to the county, to the city of Agoura and and others. This allocation is based on the direct impact of the Woolsey Fire on the city's renters and the unmet rental housing need. The funds allocated in this program are considered gap funding needed to finance new construction, reconstruction, or rehabilitation of multifamily housing projects that would benefit vulnerable pop populations, including seniors, individuals with special needs, large families, or people experiencing chronic homelessness. HUD caps the amount of CDBG Disaster Recovery Funds that can be used to subsidize each affordable housing unit. Based on those caps, which are delineated in the staff report, is unlikely that the eighteen point six million dollars could be used on a single project in Malibu. So more than likely, these would be potentially several or projects if that happens. A portion of Malibu's allocation can be used to hire consultants and to cover staff time to assist with the development and management of the program. If the council is interested in utilizing Malibu's eighteen point six million dollar allocation and wants to move forward with a disaster recovery multifamily housing program, the city must first adopt Resolution Number Twenty-one dash zero eight attached to the staff report. The next step would be for the city to complete the due diligence process and enter into a master grant agreement with HCD. That agreement would be brought to council at a future meeting for approval. Following that, and based on input from the council, staff would work with HCD to develop the solicitation process and the selection criteria for possible multifamily housing project applications. That concludes my formal comments, I'm here to answer questions, I also have Elizabeth Shabelson from the city staff and CDBG Recovery Section Chief Amanda Omen and Multifamily Housing Program Manager Stacy Rogers, both from HCD, to help answer any other specific questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much for that report, do we have uh speakers signed up for this item?
You don't have any speakers signed up for this item.
Wow, okay, then we're already back here at the council, um. This was a, uh I must say, just to start off here quickly, a shock to me to see this item, a pleasant shock and uh quite a, quite a surprise and I appreciate the staff, uh I I gather you were on a webinar and and sort of came across this. So I really appreciate the staff uh paying attention and uh it's a fascinating opportunity. And with that, I'll turn it over to council members for questions and comments, I see Paul's hand is up.
Thank you, Mikey, uh when I first saw this and read it, I had trouble wrapping my head around it. And I I sent copies of this agenda items out to a few private developers to ask them if they had any interest or what 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 did they think about it? And I was informed that this is a is not the kind of thing they usually do and that there are specialized developers that do it. And one of my friends told me to contact uh a broker they knew in Santa Monica who told me about the uh Community Corporation which started to do this in Santa Monica and is now huge, he thought it was over a thousand units that they are currently doing. And uh I'm I'm relieved to know that there are people out there who know how to do this and make use of these. And perhaps we will be able to talk to them about what they do and maybe enter into an agreement with them to utilize some of this, and I think we should go for it.
Karen, I saw your hand up next, the members.
Um yeah, thank you, I will echo what uh the mayor said and um Mayor Protem Gresanti, I also had to read that a couple of times and I thought, wow, this is a big deal. I'm surprised we hadn't heard about it before, but I realized it just came to our attention. Um obviously, the renters were hit so hard by the Woolsey Fire and many, many of them are gone from the community. I'd love to be able to have them come back. Um coincidentally, the mayor and I had already scheduled a a phone call with um Tara Baroskis, who's the head of Community Corps of Santa Monica. Uh we've met with her before, uh starting back a couple of years ago. Uh and like I said, we already had that meeting scheduled, so that was fortuitous. Uh I'm just super thankful to have this opportunity and I would definitely like to see the city just take this first step to be eligible for the funds. And utilize them.
Thank you, Karen, uh Bruce, you had your hand up, I think.
Yeah, um I just wanted to understand, I think I hear that this is, we don't have anything specific in mind at this time, but this is to preserve our optionality down the road, that we would, we need to do some steps to preserve our ability to tap into this. We're not obliged to do so, we don't have any current plans, but by doing some due diligence, we can lock in our ability to possibly get this this money down the road, is that, is that correct?
That's correct, we um, this is the first step. Um the city then has the opportunity to to develop a program, you know, and and money like this flowed through the counties and cities that were hit in twenty seventeen, so there are templates out there for what these kinds of programs look like, so we wouldn't be starting from scratch if we could see what other communities have used and kind of develop a program that works for the city and then go out and see if anybody's interested in using it. And and just to be clear, this money um would flow as a, through a grant program, it's not something that we're not, they're not cutting a check to us today or tomorrow, if once we sign an agreement, it's a reimbursable program, um assuming that we would there might be projects in the future that would fit. Um and to the extent that the funding wasn't complete And to the extent that the funding wasn't completely used by the city, it would be reallocated to other municipalities and counties that were part of these disasters.
One other question. If, if we were to follow through with this and find a project that met the requirements, is this a complete payment up to the amount of the grant, or is it a percentage of what our expenses would be?
So again, this is money that would be a grant given to a developer. There is a limit on per unit on the amount that this can cover. It is intended to be gap funding for them, so they need to find other funding to do the project. On the other hand, it's a unique opportunity for the city to actually have a pot of money to encourage this kind of affordable housing. It's not anything we've been in the position to do since I've been here or have known about. So it really is, as was mentioned earlier in the comments, if the state was looking to require afford cities to, to deal with affordable housing, here would be a way to assist that process, you know, by virtue of a horrible disaster, but something good to come out of it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Paul. You're, you're muted.
I had a occasion also to talk with a, a city councilman in Riverside. And there they've utilized similar funds to do what they call workforce and housing and senior housing. And because the amount of people who need affordable housing to be able to work in those communities, they've been, their community has been very receptive to it. And as our community continues to grow older, some senior housing wouldn't be a bad idea. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about it.
Thank you, Paul. And I just want to share a little bit more on what Karen was saying earlier. Karen and I have been talking about the idea of an affordable housing project in Malibu since we were elected. Something for people that work here and could live here, say, teachers, firemen, people working in our stores, et cetera. That's how we met Tara at Community Corp. A group of us went and toured a couple of the buildings, and we were really impressed. I didn't know what to expect, and, and, but I can tell you the buildings were, that we went to were nicer than the the market rate buildings next door. They had even like teen rooms, so these are like fam, one, at least one of the buildings was really set up for families, and it was a teen room with somebody to the kids, and they do their homework. There was little garden plots, or they can have their own little area to grow a little bit of their own little garden. I, frankly, I was completely shocked. And what we learned is that they have the ability to match the aesthetic of the community and, and and they had decided, I, I, I'm going to get it wrong, but I think they'd done about twenty buildings in Santa Monica and close to two thousand beds, and they had decided to try and help other communities. So I think since we last met with them, which was a while ago, they have branched out. I think she said Culver City, maybe, I want to say even Beverly Hills, and maybe in the South Bay as well. So they're, they're, you know, an example of people that are experts in the, in the local area. And she did come at our invitation, I think it was April two years ago, and give a ten-minute talk to the city council, to the public as well, about what affordable housing is, which I think a lot of people have preconceived notions, but it was it's, it was much different than I think a lot of us thought. So Bruce?
Yeah, just a quick question, and I, I hope this isn't getting too far fielded, because I can get my head around affordable housing much easier than a shelter. But can we, you mentioned, and I agree with it, our own population here, teachers, first responders, people that work in our markets, for example, are we able, if we pursue something like this, to designate the space for local people as opposed to people that come here from other jurisdictions?
That's a great question. I'm going to act like the expert, but I'm not. So I'm not going to get it perfect. But like a lot of these things, yes-ish. So you can have local priority. It sounds like a shelter again, doesn't it? Yeah, I think, I think where it can be slightly not perfect, as I remember her saying, maybe Karen could correct me, is if somebody moves in, and then maybe their job improves, and they're above the threshold for the income level, then they're not going to kick them out, you know. But when they leave and they fill that spot again, you have to, you, you know, it's for certain income bracket. It's, it's so. And, and a project like this, what we learned the other day can also be, it can be blended. It doesn't have to be one thing and not another. It could be senior housing. It could be low income. It could be affordable. You know, there's these different classifications. So it doesn't have to be one thing, which was interesting. It's just basically about housing, as I understood it. And Lisa was, oh, I apologize. Lisa was all as well and grave all the context here I am trying to give, which I'm not even sure why I am, so.
I think, I think the, the key is you can state a preference that you would like to encourage local people to have, you know, the housing. But I think there is, you cannot make it completely exclusive. Because again, it's, it's trying to, it's, you know, it's federal money, so there are requirements, but I think you can, you can, as you describe it, you can say that you want it to really function to help, you know, local teachers or things like that, and, and that would be a preference. So that is possible.
Thank you, Paul.
One of the other things I found interesting is that the, the models that they used in the gender report were a blended building where you have maybe two-thirds of the building is market rate, and a third of it is low, moderate income housing. And so because you're agreeing to maintain the rents at the lower level for twenty years, it's, it makes it much more attractive to the developer if they're able to get reasonable rents from the other, from the other units in the building.
Yeah, I, I gather, talking to a couple of people that have invested in these sort of instruments, that it's, it's have, it's for investors that are willing to go long-term. It's not a flip type of project by any means. It's a long-term, like twenty-year sort of deal.
Yeah.
Do we have comments or a motion on this?
I would move that we adopt Resolution twenty-one oh eight, et cetera.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Urine?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, excellent. And I am going to ask for a five-minute break. We're moving along really well, but this is that moment. So let's, I just lost track of the clock. Eight forty-two, let's be back by before eight fifty and get moving again, okay? So thank you, everybody. Or you can turn off your camera and mute too. Okay. Well, we got three. Make it four. Karen, are you there? There we go. Okay, it is eight fifty-one, and we are back, and we're on to item six A, proposals for legal services related to the investigation of allegations set forth in an affidavit filed by former Malibu City Councilmember Jefferson Wagner. Can we have a report, please?
Mayor Pearson, members of the council, good evening. At the council's direction, city staff solicited proposals from twelve firms identified by council members to investigate the allegations contained in the affidavit of Jefferson Wagner. Of the twelve that were identified in your staff report, to which proposals were sent, five proposed. Isaac Friedberg, Worksman Jackson and Quinn, Crowe Mourning, Kadir Adams, Evan Janess. And we have summarized in great detail the attorneys responsible for the project, their billing rates, their qualifications, what they believe to be the scope of work to investigate the allegations in the affidavit. We've also attached each of their proposals. So at this point, the council has several options available to it. It can select from among these five firms someone to conduct the investigation. It can select from among these five firms, firms that they might want, the council might want to interview. It can take no action. It can also reopen the proposal period and solicit other proposals from other firms, or additional firms, or it can select additional, request additional information from these firms, or it can provide additional directions to staff. We don't have a recommendation on this item, but we have attached all the proposals for your review. I suspect that you've reviewed them in great detail and can provide direction to staff as requested. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have public speakers on this item?
You do. We have five public speakers. I'll read them in order and then call them one by one to speak. They are Mark Bowdy, E. Barry Haldeman, Lloyd Ahern, Howard Redsky, and Lynn Norton. We'll hear from Mark Bowdy first.
Hello, all. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
Okay, so I'll make it quick. This is kind of my sweet spot. I've been litigating and trying cases for thirty-four years in Los Angeles. Twelve firms identified by council members. I think we all know that Councilmember Silverstein cannot be involved in the recommendation process because he has a conflict. Because he and Steve seem to do most things together, an argument can be made, you should not take recommendations from either of the two of them. You need, you didn't give the lawyers any guidance, so I would suggest that you impose a flat fee cap of twenty-five to forty thousand dollars. of twenty-five to forty thousand dollars. And a, and a two lawyer cap when law firms say five, six, or seven lawyers can participate. And the fee estimate for a category of work is to be determined. You'll rack up a huge bill. This is not Woolsey. This is something that can be done more efficiently. Jefferson Wagner and Bruce Silverstein, I think Bruce may have drafted portions of the affidavit. They should unseal the warrant. Normally, when a warrant is delivered and a house is searched, only Jefferson Wagner would get the facts underlying the warrant. Given Bruce's interest in transparency, that should have already been provided by Jefferson Wagner. And you should provide that to the outside law firm you hire. You should also specify the tasks. So the law firms have an idea. You'll need subpoena power. The tasks at a minimum would be to depose Jefferson Wagner, Reva Feldman, Bruce Silverstein, Mr. Wagner's wife or girlfriend, because she was on site. And then you should specify what sort of written report you're looking for. So that when the law firms are bidding for this flat fee, they know what the city's desired expectation goal is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Our next speaker is E. Barry Haldeman.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Barry.
Great, okay. As many of you know, I'm a longtime resident and I'm happy to see actually tonight's council meeting where there's, it's been very civil and there's, were so many unanimous votes. But until now, the city has been disrupted since the last election by allegations made before the election, primarily by Councilman Silverstein and subsequently by not only Councilman Silverstein, but also in an affidavit of former Councilman Wagner. Councilman Wagner's affidavit, which it has been rumored Councilman Silverstein assisted in writing, I don't know that to be true, did not name names or specific instances of any such wrongdoing, except for one instance of bribery where someone approached Councilman Wagner, but he couldn't remember their name. The, yet allegations continue to abound about fraud, dishonesty by city staff and other transgressions. The allegations both by City Councilman Silverstein and by Councilman Wagner are merely hearsay. And the fact they have, that they were sworn to by Councilman Wagner without anything else are still just allegations without proof. I understand the allegations have been turned over to the district attorney for investigation, although as I recall, Councilwoman Silverstein in social media postings felt even the district attorney was politically motivated not to have any negative finding against Malibu. I don't agree with that considering other cities that have come under scrutiny and what's happened to them. Nevertheless, these are serious allegations that must be investigated or they will hang like a cloud over the city forever and interfere with the other serious things that we have to do. But I believe, and I believe Councilman Silverstein agrees that the investigation cannot be done internally and certainly not by those that have been, have made the allegations. So the only thing to do, which appears to be the situation on the agenda now, is to engage an outside law firm that is very familiar and experienced with these type of investigations. And you've mentioned that several firms have been suggested. I urge the council to move quickly on this because I think it's a very important thing to get rid of this stench that has been created and clear the air for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lloyd Ahern.
Good evening, council. My name is Lloyd Ahern. I want to talk about this. An old saying about, it's a debater's trick. And the debater creates a problem, accuses his opponent of that problem that he created. And then makes the, that opponent defend it. So what we have here is a pure Bruce baloney sandwich going on. He creates a problem with Jefferson because he's in a campaign. They want to get Reva. And they come up with this thing that, and I like Jefferson and he helped me a lot this eight years in council, so I, I, this is kind of tough on me to say this. But if you took a slap of Swiss cheese and laid it out on a big table, there'd be a lot of holes in it. Well, this affidavit is really bad. It's Swiss cheese. It's a baloney sandwich. It's a mashed potato sandwich. It's everything that is ambiguous. I can't believe we're paying this much attention to this thing. So what I would propose is to either let Bruce pursue the district attorney and get them to do it for the, you know, because for the price of just, that's their services. Or somehow to put a cap on the amount of money we're going to spend on something that we know, we all know, even the people that support Bruce, know this is a phony deal. And I would just say, let's get this thing over with because as long as he's got us in this debater's trick that he's pulled. He's fooling us and we should be taking care of, we should be controlling him. He should not be controlling us. So I'm not sure what you're going to come up with, but somebody come up, think of outside the box here. Let's get this thing over with and let's not have it cost a hundred thousand dollars. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Howard Redsky.
Good evening again. We're over a barrel. This thing just hangs out there. Like Lloyd said, this is worse than Swiss cheese. I think that the city council needs to pick the law firm with the most experience that can get this done as fast as possible. And one thing I strongly advise, we need to figure out a way to get Bruce and Jefferson to give names. There's a lot of allegations in that affidavit with no names. Give the law firm some names. Let them go talk to these people with subpoena power. Because if we have to subpoena all these people, this is just time and you see they're billing by the hour. Jefferson's got to know the name of some of these people. At least we need something to go by. And let's just get this done as fast as we can and put a cap on the dollars and let's move on. Because I think a lot of us know what the outcome is going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Lynn Norton.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Lynn.
Okay, thanks. So I would personally separate Jefferson's affidavit into two parts. Number one is what happened when his house was raided and then number two, everything else. And I have always wanted to know what instigated that raid on his house. It was obviously inappropriate. I have absolutely no idea what the source of it was, but it's, it's, it's solid and somebody definitely should be able to get to the bottom of that. And, you know, the fact that that happened in Malibu is shocking and we should do that. I think, I don't actually remember. I did read the affidavit. I don't remember it very well, but it seemed vague to me. I think that like, you know, some people think that, oh, you're going to disprove that there's been any, there's no way you're going to be able to disprove any of it. And you're probably not going to be able to prove it either because it's too vague. I think that either, you know, maybe Jefferson could zoom in on some one specific claim that has some details and then maybe go forward with that. Otherwise, I think you're going to spend a lot of money and it's really not going to either prove or disprove anything. But the raid on his house is just absolutely shocking and I really hope that you will fully investigate that. And one tiny little thing I want to point out is that, like every week I've been hearing this person, Mark Bout, speak. And the very first time I ever heard him speak, which I had never heard his name before, the first thing he said was that Steve Euring was Bruce Silverstein's lackey. And he said this five minutes after Steve had just voted down Bruce. And I mean, it's clearly there's some agenda going on there and I don't know what's going on there. But Steve did not even campaign on the same campaign that Bruce did. There's just no connection like that. It's just a way of kind of discrediting somebody. Oh yes, and then in the same meeting, he said that, that Bruce and Steve were both like lackeys or newcomers, but that Paul wasn't, even though all three of them got elected at the same time. So anyway, I don't like hearing people talk who have agendas. But anyway, please do investigate the, what happened at Jefferson's house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pearson, that concludes public comments on this item, but I did want to point out that Mark has raised his hand in Zoom.
All right, I think we're back here at the council now. So city council, here we are. Steve?
Thank you, Mikey. I think, you know, a couple of things are going to have to happen. One, we're going to have to appoint some people to go out and interview these law firms and come up with the one that we think will give us the best job. And I think during that process, they should also figure out if we can put a cap on what we're going to spend to do this. I don't know what that cap should be. Because I'm not, I'm not dealt with that many law firms. But my, I would, I would like to make a motion that says I would, I would move to put Paul Grisanti and Bruce Silverstein on the committee to interview these law firms and come up back to with a recommendation and also a recommendation of what the cap should be in terms of what we should spend.
Mayor Pearson, you're muted.
I just saw that, sorry. Was that a comment or a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay.
That was, we got, somebody's got to interview these firms. That's just, and, and I'm, I'm not an expert on law firms.
Bruce, you had your hand up?
Well, I'm going to second the motion, but I'm sure we're going to have some substantial discussion, so I'm, I'm ready to talk now, but I can wait and hear some other people's comments. I saw that Mr. Bowdy did have his hand up. I don't know if you were going to give him another chance to say something or not, but I would prefer to hear him speak if he's going to before we do.
I wasn't going to take any more public comment, but I think it was, yeah, I wasn't going unless you, unless the council wants me to. No, okay. Paul?
I, I for one would like to hear what Mr. Bowdy has to say. And I think that Bruce was correct in saying we should probably hear him out. I thought his suggestions as to how to approach hiring the attorney were good, so.
Okay, Bruce?
I, I was not suggesting we hear him out because I have a lot of unfond things to say about him and his agenda. But I would, I just wanted to know if he was going to be given an opportunity to speak because I didn't want to speak before him, that's all.
Karen?
We don't typically entertain public speakers a second time, so I would not be in favor of that.
Yeah, I, I, unless there's a, three people want that, I think we should move on.
Okay.
Paul?
As long as we're asking questions. Several people said that they, they said they had heard that, that Bruce helped with the writing of the affidavit. And if that is so, I would think that Bruce would have a conflict. But I don't know if it's so or not. Would you care to comment on that, Bruce?
I'll comment on that when I make all my comments. I'll be happy to respond. Do you have any other question, comments?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, so first of all, I don't know how this item ended up on the agenda in this forum this evening in the first place. The written actions from January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, Malibu City Council adjourned regular meeting state. The council determined it would research law firms to invite to make a proposal to investigate the Wagner affidavit and provide its suggestions to interim city attorney Cotty to coordinate the process. John said earlier that staff was directed to contact law firms and request proposals. That's not what we did. I reviewed the recording of the meeting. The discussion begins at four hours, twenty-four minutes and forty-five seconds, goes on for about ten minutes. The discussion was to provide names to the city attorney and then quote, figure out a way to get that before council, close quote. It was also agreed that we weren't going to request proposals. I had understood we were going to provide names to John. We would then meet again and determine the best way to solicit proposals leading to an interview of firms that we determined would be appropriate to interview. I didn't understand that we authorized anyone to begin a solicitation process. Now, John is conflicted and, and I don't mean in a, in a, in a sense that John did anything wrong. John did not do anything wrong. But John is conflicted because the Wagner affidavit, and I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes more fully, but the Wagner affidavit alleges that Jefferson Wagner provided Christie Hogan with documentation pertaining to the alleged bribe. And by the way, that's not, I'm going to talk about some of the comments, but I'll talk about Barry's first. Barry says that Jefferson's affidavit is pure hearsay. It's not hearsay. Jefferson states, I, I'm going to divide it into three sections. The first, it's, it is divided into three sections. The first section talks about conversations that occurred directly involving Jefferson Wagner where he was offered a bribe. That's not hearsay. When someone says I was offered a bribe, that person is not providing hearsay. They're, they're providing facts of what happened. He says he gave, that the person gave him documentation about, about who he was supposed to support and he provided that documentation to Christie Hogan. I don't know if any of that happened, but that's what Jefferson says happened. He says that he swears that happened and he personally was involved in that. He says he gave Christie Hogan the documentation. It then disappeared into a black hole. So there is an implication of some potential involvement here by Christie Hogan. For all I know, none of this ever happened. But if it did happen as alleged, Christie has a conflict and because Christie has a conflict, the city attorney is conflicted. And we've talked about that and John told me he was not going to be involved in this process in any way other than to collect names from us and give us the names that we collectively gave him. Now, the city manager's conflicted. There is, there is a lot of hearsay about the city manager. But there is, but it's there and she is conflicted as well and so are her subordinates. So who oversaw this process of soliciting proposals? From what I can tell, the city clerk managed the process and I have a lot of respect for her. Less clear to me is whether she did this under the direction or supervision of anyone or whether she did it entirely on her own. Too much does go on behind the scenes in the city in a non-transparent, non-accountable way. But even if she did it on her own, she's still, she's still a subordinate of the city manager who's still her boss. Now, based on my conversations with John, I had expected that the next step was going to be the provision, as I said, of a list of the names that we had proposed. And then we would determine what to do next. For example, contact every firm on the list, contact some firms, expand the list, something else, I don't know. I also expected that we would agree on the best way to reach out and what to say because words matter. We would have discussed what the communication would have been and then it would have been made. It wouldn't have been unilaterally determined by a member of the staff. Now, the Wagner affidavit, as I said, has three parts. The first part is allegations about a bribe that he was offered. And that's not hearsay and those are allegations of facts that Jefferson was involved in. The second part, let me back up before I get, I want to, I want to respond to some of these comments. Barry said that during my campaign, I alleged that the city manager was involved in certain wrongdoing. False. You can go back and look at everything I've written, everything I've said. Never said a word about anything of any wrongdoing by the city manager during my campaign. How did this all come about? I got elected. And after I was elected, for the first time ever, Jefferson Wagner approached me and told me that there were a number of things that he wanted to have put into a record that occurred and those are the things that are in the affidavit. I didn't know anything about any of those things when I was running for city council. I didn't know anything about any of those things the day that I was elected to city council. I learned about them afterwards. It was never my intention when running to be in a position, the first meeting that we were installed, to be talking about the allegations that Jefferson later brought to my attention.
Okay, Bruce, can I just, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but aren't we talking about the agenda item? You're not talking about the agenda item. You're talking about the history, the history of the agenda item.
With all due respect, Mikey, right now I'm responding to public comments by, by, by members of the public. You didn't cut them off and say they weren't referring to the agenda item. So I'm responding.
Public can do what they want. We are, we are supposed to follow the agenda item and so I just want, I want to keep on task is all. We can go into the history of Malibu and the history of this item, but
But let me ask
Let's move it forward.
If, if, if no member of city council is going to take into account any comment that was made by any member of the public, which I think a lot of them were inaccurate, I don't have to respond to them, but I suspect that what's If, if, if no member of city council is going to take into account any comment that was made by any member of the public, which I think a lot of them were inaccurate, I don't have to respond to them, but I suspect that what's said by. Public is of value to people on city council and that they take into account what they hear from members of the public when they make decisions on the matter on the agenda. Which we heard from a number of members of the public and a number of them made misstatements of fact. I feel it's important to correct those statements of fact so that we're making a decision on this agenda item. We're doing it based on a proper record.
Okay.
That's why I was responding to that.
Okay, well, you were off under the history of the item before that, so just trying. Just try and keep on task. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, well, I think I am on task. Mr. Ahern talks, so, so let me continue to talk about the affidavit and what needs to be looked at. So the, so the first section, as I said, is an allegation that a crime occurred. An attempted bribe is a crime. Doesn't have to succeed. It's a crime when it's made, when, when the offer is made. Fact that Jefferson doesn't remember who the person was. Look, I would remember who it was. I would have taken notes. I suspect a lot of you would have taken notes too. We're not Jefferson Wagner. Jefferson Wagner has all kinds of, all kinds of skills and, and attributes, and he's got some things that are less so. He even talked about that the night that we were installed. He didn't take notes. He doesn't remember. So what? Unless people think he's lying about what happened, he alleges these things happened and he was personally involved. The next thing he alleges is about the raid of his home. And by the way, there's no allegation in there about the city manager doing anything or having anything to do with it. The allegations are that he was contacted by another politician who had a relationship, a friend relationship. With the city manager and that that person wanted Jefferson to take certain action on the city manager's contract. There's no suggestion that the city manager was involved in that, asked that that be done.
Bruce, none of these people are going to investigate this. They're not investigating. You're, 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 you're trying this in court. This isn't court. This is a, we have a proposal here. That's what the agenda item is.
I understand that and I am dealing with this because the suggestion has been made that we have a very limited investigation. Different people have said different things about what it is that needs to be investigated. These are all the things that are on the options of what we're supposed to be doing tonight. So I'm talking about them and I'm almost finished with the affidavit. The third aspect of the affidavit, and, and that affidavit also talks about that same politician wanting certain things done with respect to a crosswalk. And there was discussion about off-site parking. And if you look at the minutes of May 29, there's discussion of both the managers, the city manager's contract and off-site parking within the same paragraph. And at that same time, the crosswalk occurred. Now, the last part, I mentioned it earlier, there's one other thing in there about. A city employee being terminated for doing something improper and it not being brought to anyone's attention, but Jefferson was told about that. He said he was told to the city manager. But now, I did assist Jefferson with his affidavit. And John can talk about this because this is a very common occurrence. Jefferson came to me, he came to me with a lot of facts. And he asked me to help him put this into the form that would be legally appropriate. So I did. I took notes of what he said, and I think I've discussed this at a city council meeting before, Paul.
You have.
I think I, I did. I took notes of what he said and I wrote it down in the proper legal format that I understood to be proper. I then gave it to him. He reviewed it. He edited it. He made changes and ultimately he concluded it was his affidavit and he signed it. There's, now. I have no fond desire to find that anybody did anything wrong. But I think we need to look at this. So there's a lot of serious allegations in this affidavit. I think we, we already voted, I thought, to hire a law firm to perform an investigation. But we never agreed on the process that has been put before us tonight, and I'm troubled by that. I'm troubled by the fact that the process has gotten out of our control. We are supposed to be in control, not the people that answer to us, and the people that answer to us seem to have taken control of a process which involves, among other things, allegations that people below us may have done something wrong. So. In any event, I do believe that I am qualified. I'm not conflicted. It's appropriate for me to be on a subcommittee that will, that will interview firms. I'm not going to be doing the investigation. And I like Steve's idea that it be Paul and I because everyone knows that Paul will keep me in check. And I think that there's many members of the public. I think, I'm not gonna say 2,400, but I think there's a great number of members of the public. Who if I don't agree who we hire are going to believe it was a whitewash and not be satisfied. And I think we do need to get this behind us one way or the other, and I think the only way that's going to happen is if I'm on the committee that. Chooses the firm, the firm then does its job and we get a report, one way or the other. And I'm sorry if you think I went off track. I believe that everything I said was directly relevant to what we're talking about now.
And Councilmember Silverstein, if, if I misunderstood council's direction, that's, that's on me and I, I apologize for, for that. Nonetheless, all options are still available to you. These firms are available to you, as are any of the firms that the council wants to interview, the process, the selection of the firm. All of that is, still falls within your sound discretion and you're more than well, more than welcome to take any actions you deem appropriate. Relative to the allegations in the affidavit, the selection of the firms, how you contract with those firms, as Mr. Bowdy suggested. He made, he raised some good suggestions, so all of that still falls within your sound discretion. Including reissuing the request for proposals to the same or to additional firms.
Like I said, I, I thought that we actually discussed and agreed. At the meeting on, on January 28th, I think it was, that we weren't going to do an RFP process. We were told we didn't have to do an RFP process and that we were going to engage in a more traditional. Interview process, a beauty contest, it's often called among lawyers. And low and behold, after we agreed on that, we put out an RFP. I don't get it.
But the only way that you can have that beauty contest is if you have some information about the firms. That you want to put in the contest. And so that, that was our thinking. We wanted to get the information. Of the people that you selected, so.
It's not an RFP for the lowest price necessarily. It was just a, to see who was interested in potentially. That we could interview. As far as I, that's how I took it. But let, other city councilors that haven't spoken yet. Karen?
Thank you. Councilmember Silverstein, I'm surprised that you're participating in this right now. I assume that your conflict would have caused you to recuse yourself, so that right there surprises me. I certainly wouldn't see it be, uh, wouldn't see it proper for you to be involved in interviewing the firms. You are completely conflicted in this. So. That won't work for me. We have five responses out of the 12. We've all read them. We, uh, this is what I expected. Not that I discussed it with, um, the interim city attorney. Or, or the city clerk or anybody else. But this is what I expected. So we, we need to move forward with this as far as I'm concerned. And I don't think we need to have a subcommittee to interview firms. We have a very thorough response here. Not everybody has responded in the exact same way, but I think we are able. To choose a firm that will satisfy what we need here, uh, and put a cap and not to exceed number on it. And, and get moving. This has been going on for, since the night you got sworn in. So that, that's my recommendation.
I wonder if John could comment on whether I am conflicted from being involved in this discussion and in whatever vote we take.
You certainly don't have a financial interest in the issue. Um, there could be a bias based on statements that you've made prior to and during. Your campaign and during the, during or after the issuance of the affidavit. I would have to review those statements to fully analyze, and I have not seen them all, to be honest with you. It would really be up to you to determine whether or not you can be fair and impartial in the selection of the firm, i.e. do you have a bias that would prevent you from. Acting fairly in this matter. That said, it's also a legislative matter. It's not a quasi judicial matter where due process rights are at stake, so. All that would factor into a decision. It's likely that you do not have a conflict in the selection of the firms. But I would, again, I would have to do some more research to determine that accurately.
So I, I will say that I don't believe that I have a bias towards whatever firm gets selected for this. I don't have a, I don't believe I have a bias towards what ultimately is determined here. But John, if you've, if you've heard me say already something or read something that you believe evidences that bias, please speak out.
I will do some research on the question to make sure that prior to your next, to this issue being considered again, I'll have an answer to that question.
Thank you.
I think Paul. Did you speak yet?
Yes, spoken in the beginning.
Okay. And Steve, you spoke?
Yeah, I made the motion, Mikey.
Yeah, I know, just circling back around.
Look, I, I, I agree, you know, the, the process that says let's get it moving, let's get it done, let's figure out what the right firm is to do it, let's put a cap on it. And we got, this is, unless we get this, somebody investigate this, this is going to hang around forever.
I agree. For myself, I read through all of these. I researched each of the firms that, that replied. I, I did look at the cost. Sort of estimates here. I thought that was an important part of it, not that, you know, because it's a lot of money. You know, I, I, I saw one of the firms, I thought. Thought the firm of Evan Genus, if I'm saying that right, was a great fit. I liked that one. That was my personal favorite. With that said, I've never met any of these attorneys. I don't know them personally. At all, zero. And to me, I was hoping we would once again get going, so. I think a number of us agree on trying to move this forward and get through this. It's been lingering and hanging on a long time and it's, I know it's been. Hard on a lot of citizens and the, the city in general, and so that's, that's what I feel right now. Paul, I see your hands up.
I had reached out to a couple of attorneys of my acquaintance and the only one who actually. Looked through this and wrote me comments on it also came to the same conclusion as you. So. Bert Ross, if you're still awake, thank you very much for getting me to the same point where Mikey is. And I, and when I heard. The dollar amount limits that were suggested by Bow. Mr. Bowdy, I thought that that's the right kind of neighborhood. We're looking at a fairly simple set of interviews here, I would think. Because. You know, and I thought that whoever it was that made the suggestion that, uh, that the. That the warrant be unlocked. To, so we could establish whatever truth there was to that was also a good selection. A good suggestion. So. I'm, I'm on the generous team, I think.
I'm sorry, Karen?
I just want to circle back. We had a motion in a second. Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, that's true. Could someone repeat the motion? Steve, I guess it was your motion, but you.
And I wanted to, one comment on it. Yeah, the motion was that we appoint. Paul and Bruce. To interview the firms, pick out the firm that they think is the most, would be the most effective in helping us conduct this investigation. And come back with a cap on what we would spend to make that happen. Now, the only other comment I'd like to make is I don't know Bupkis about interviewing law firms. You know, if, if we were interviewing an accounting firm, it was going to come in and do an audit. I would want to participate in that because I've done that in the past. I, I've worked on the audit team for Arthur Andersen. I've done a bunch of audits. I understand how the audit programs are put together. I've got a pretty good idea what, if the firm should be doing. I understand when they say the words, what the words mean. And I think we deserve the same thing here going after this legal firm. Having somebody who is familiar with the legal process. That, that is, you know, has, has dealt with these firms or firms like this in the past, I think will help us make the best decision. And the only person we get on the city council that I think is skilled to do that is Bruce. So I go back and say Bruce and Paul, it'd be my two choices. Let them go at this and I think Bruce is right. Paul will keep, they will keep each other in check.
Uh, Bruce?
So. Again, I, I thought we had already tentatively agreed last time that we were going to conduct some interview process and getting some documents is not an interview. I don't know these firms either. I've never spoken to a single one of these attorneys, ever. I don't know who they are. I, I did get a recommendation from another law firm of one of the firms that's on this list. But I never spoke with them. They just came highly recommended. And the person that recommended them didn't have a conversation with about, about, with them about this either, by the way. But I, Mikey, you said you don't know anything about these people, but you read a couple of paragraphs about one and they look good to you. That's, that's just not the way lawyers are selected. I also think that the lawyers need to explain to us. How serious or not serious this is before we can determine whether there should be a cap or what the cap should be. We, we, this is not, you know, the, in the West, they used to say, let's have the trial and then hang them. I feel like this is about, let's have the investigation and then clear everybody. That's just not the way it works. The less you spend, the less investigation you're going to get. Maybe we don't need a major investigation. I don't know. I need to hear from these lawyers. Maybe we need something more substantial. I just don't know, and I think it's irresponsible to do anything other than speak to some lawyers about what they think should be done. And hearing a number of members of the public who are biased against me, who downplay this is not credible. And by the way, one other thing I just want to say, Mr. Bowdy, the very first time he spoke to us, said he was involved in some way, shape or form with the Weezer matter. Which is implicated by the Wagner affidavit. So. When people talk about conflicts, there's an issue there. I don't know what that relationship is, but I know he felt it was important enough to disclose it.
I, I don't actually know what you're talking about, to be honest.
The affidavit?
The, did you say the Weez dot gar matter?
Weezer.
Oh, the Weezer matter, okay. Paul, you had your hand up?
I, I was gonna second what Steve said as far as. Hiring attorneys goes. I, I assumed and, you know, what they say about assume, but I, I kind of feel that the most. Capable person to hire an attorney for the city of Malibu is the city attorney for Malibu. And I do think you're conflicted, Bruce. And I, I can't help that. But that's what I feel like. So I don't think it's a good idea to put you and me. On a, on a subcommittee to go interview attorneys.
Paul, working together with me might actually give you the first opportunity to see that I'm not so bad. And I know what I'm talking about.
I'd love to work with you on something I actually know something about. I could pick a homeless guy off the street to go with you and it'd be about, I'd be a little more useful than him, but that's about it.
You undersell yourself. I know you're a smart guy. I, I, and I mean that sincerely. I can tell from the questions you ask and the analysis that you bring to bear.
We have a motion in a second. Let's, let's, let's have a roll call on the motion, see where we're at.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
No.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
No.
Mayor Pearson?
You know, I want to move this forward, but Bruce, I just don't see how you can be the person interviewing. On something that you are a part of and have had so many comments on. You're the, you are the only person in the city council who's. Seems to be. Biased right up front, so I'm going to vote no as well on that motion.
Motion fails.
So with that said.
Can I make a motion?
Let's hear your motion.
I, I move the identical motion that was just made except substitute Steve and Paul, and I won't talk to Steve about what he's doing, so you don't have to worry about him just trying to use Steve in some way.
Do we have a second? No second? Steve, Paul?
And I'm, I'm just not. You know, I'll do whatever we have to do, but I, you know, I'm not the person who is going to. Be the most qualified to interview a law firm, uh, you know. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. That's my, you know, this, this process of. You know, Paul thinks he's conflicted. John said he isn't conflicted. Karen says he's conflicted. John said he isn't conflicted. I mean, we got all these people making all these legal decisions who've got nothing to do with the legal process. You got two people. Cotty said something, Bruce said something. I think if I'm going to listen to legal advice, I want to get it from those two. So I, you know, I just think. Do it right. That's, citizens of residents of Malibu want us to do it right. Uh, you know, and, and, and that's why I just think we had to, look, this is not brain surgery. This is getting somebody who understands what the questions are asked, how to ask them, what, what the responses mean, how the. what, what the responses mean, how those responses are reflected in the work product we're going to get. That, to me, is the most important part of what we got to do in this situation. To make sure when we get to the end, we're going to give this task to a law firm, and we want to make sure we know what we're going to get back. That's what we're doing. You know, we're going to be spending residents' money on this taxpayer money. We deserve to give them the best.
An uninvolved lawyer, then? Why would we bring somebody in that, you know, potentially has a bias?
He's, he's not voting with the law firm. He's just trying to pick the firm that's got the best qualifications to help us do that. He's not coming up with the decision from the law firm. He's not working with the law firm. He's not, he's just saying, look, based upon my experience, and, and Bruce has got, you know, you can say what you want about Bruce. Bruce has got more legal experience than all of us put together. He's got more ability to review this firm than all of, I think we owe the residents the best we can give them. We're going to take their money. Let's make sure we give them the value for their money.
And I do not mean to be mean. We've been getting along, been doing great, but I don't know if that's a lawyer that's been brought up on federal racketeering charges and sanctions in the past. That, that that to me feels like a slippery, a slippery, I'm just being honest here.
I have not been brought up on federal racketeering charges. That is a false statement of fact.
Well, that's what I read, and if that.
No, it's not what you read. They suggest you read it carefully. It's not what you read because that didn't happen.
Guys.
That's the problem. You make a lot of assumptions, and you don't actually look at the details.
Yes, Paul?
I'd like to call the question.
What's the question?
We don't, we don't, we don't have a.
It was seconded, wasn't it?
Nope, we don't have a, we don't have a second.
Steve, I encourage you to second it, and, and, and if the council votes to have you on this committee, do it, because you're not going to get what you just advocated, and I think what I now move for is the second best option.
I have a question.
And I'm, I'm fine if you talk to Bruce all you want. That's fine with me, Steve. I mean, that's up to you. You have all the rights you want. I, anyone interviewing a lawyer should definitely feel free to talk to somebody.
Well, I don't think he can talk to me anyway because, because Paul and he would be two out of five of us, so the Brown Act would preclude it anyway.
That's correct.
Well said.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can, Paul.
Would our attorney be there for the interview? I'm happy to be, if you request it. I'm happy to get another attorney there as well. So yes, I would be there. I can. That would make me a lot more comfortable.
Well, could you work with me if, uh, John's overseeing us?
I think I'd rather see you and John than, than me and you and John.
Let's get Bruce and John. I'll buy that.
I'd be happy to work with John. John and I are going to be.
I'll buy that. I'll, I'll make that motion. Let's make it Bruce and John. They sit down, they interview the firms, and they come back with the answer. That is the strongest, John, I should have thought of you sooner. That does give us the, the most skilled people to interview the law firm. I think that's a great idea.
And, and since we both, we both are accused of having conflicts, I guess we conflict each other out.
There you go.
What, what exactly is John's conflict?
Who cares?
Well, he said there's a conflict, but I don't know what it is. He didn't have anything to do with Malibu at that time.
We do have one motion that has not yet been seconded, and that was with Steve.
I'll withdraw it. I'll withdraw that motion.
And I'll make the motion. We make it John and, and Bruce interview the firms.
I'll second that.
I think there should be another city council person there.
How about you, Mikey? How about Karen? How about Paul? I don't really care who it is.
Mayor, if you don't want to do it, I am happy to.
Okay, I would, I would agree. I would agree with that.
So the motion then becomes, we have Bruce, John, and Karen tasked with interviewing the law firms and coming back with a recommendation. That's my motion.
Second.
And I'm okay in that motion if they come back with, it doesn't, what if they don't agree? So if it comes back with two, then it comes back with two or even three. I don't see a problem there.
Then the whole council can decide what to do.
Yeah, then we, then we get to pick.
Well, the council does decide what to do ultimately.
We listen to what they say.
The council can overrule all of you, but that's the way that goes. That's just the system. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion is for John, Steve, I'm sorry, John, Bruce, and Karen to interview the law firms.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Let's do roll call, please.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're on to item seven A. Investigation of allegations in January sixteenth, twenty twenty-one letter from Kanata Otul Fikes and Olson.
Mayor Pearson, this was a council-initiated item. I did prepare the staff report, but the, the purpose of the item is to, and let me take a step back. Councilmember Silverstein, I was under the impression you were declaring a conflict on this item.
I was going to, and you told me that I didn't necessarily need to, so you, I'll, I'll abide by your guidance, John.
Uh, I, I think on this item, you do ensure that the, the allegations stem from your conduct.
Am I permitted to make any comments, or am I off this altogether? Because I, I thought you told me it was a legislative matter and not a, um.
That was the last item. This is also a legislative matter, but it also involves allegations that directly impact or directly involve you. So I would suggest that the better practice here is to recuse yourself.
I was, I was going to abstain and make comments, but if you tell me that I cannot make comments, I will exit Zoom.
That was, that would be the better practice, yes.
I will abide by your suggestion. Uh, hopefully I'll be able to get back in. See y'all.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay. I guess we should go to public comment.
You have nine speakers on this item. I'll read them all in order and then call them one by one to speak.
Okay.
They are Mark Bowdy, E. Barry Haldeman, Joe Drummond, Lloyd Ahern, Hack Wong, Howard Rudsky, Lynn Norton, Rosemary Eyde, and Georgia Goldfarb. Our first speaker will be Mark Bowdy.
Okay.
Hello, all. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
Okay, so, once again, trial lawyer, thirty-four years in the court system. I've done dozens of these investigations and finished jury trials in this area. Let's make sure one big mistake doesn't get made. Someone that Bruce asked to speak named Scott Dietrich claimed that any time an employee hires a lawyer and complains about workplace conditions, the employee is immediately escorted out the door, essentially. That's, that's, might be the dumbest thing I've heard in the last ten years, and I've heard some silly statements. We, we all know Bruce and Steve want to get Reva out of the building and gloat over achieving a campaign promise, but here's what you need to do to protect both uh, the city and Reva, and this is how all of these are handled. You commission an outside investigation with a fee cap. You allow only one lawyer to work on that investigation to keep the fees down and consistent with the cap. The purpose of the investigation is to have someone objective look at the conduct and behavior of Bruce Silverstein and Reva during this phase where Bruce is inundating her with emails. I don't want to prejudge it. I've read the emails. Uh, it would be a very difficult place to work, might be the shortest way to sum it up. That outside investigation protects the employee and the city. The report becomes something that shows that the city took a basic and fundamental step to protect a female city manager who has hired a lawyer and has said working conditions are extremely hostile and abusive. You need to do it. Now, business one oh one, you don't have an intern city manager. So under no circumstances should you be considering a quick exit and leaving yourself naked without a city manager, particularly one as talented as Reva, who works six days a week, often twelve hours a day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is E. Barry Haldeman.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Barry.
Sorry to make so many appearances. I've never done this before, but anyway, uh, this is important stuff. In light of the letter from Reva's attorney that a hostile workforce is, a hostile work environment has been created. It's, it's very important that this be investigated. And I think that, that any business, as the previous speaker said, any business where these type of allegations are made, there has to be an investigation, given the general distrust that Councilman Silverstein appears to have for the city uh, and, and the city manager, and the only way such investigation can occur was, is with an outside firm. So I think it's critical also to show the staff that we're supporting them, because maybe these allegations should be looked at. Uh, and also maybe the way the city practices their internal dealing with employees should be looked at, just so they can get a clean bill of health. Because otherwise, it's going to hang over the whole situation, and if uh, Reva does leave, uh, you're going to have a lot of difficulty attracting a new city manager if you haven't gotten some kind of a clean bill of health. So I would say that, that, uh, and maybe the firm that is being interviewed uh, for the overall investigation might have a labor department in it, so that you might get both the firm to do both, if you, if you feel that's appropriate. And I suggest that, that, um, the, both firms have subpoena power and that, um, and to avoid, one more thing, very important, to avoid additional liability for the city now. There should be a buffer set up between Councilman Silverstein and the city manager, a go-between. So things don't get worse until the investigation is completed. We cannot ignore these issues, and I urge that the council act quickly to start an investigation and to set up a buffer. Let's, let's treat both of these investigations as critical. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi there.
Hi.
Honorable Mayor Mikey and City Council, I did say some of this at the special city council hearing last Monday. This potential investigation would be of both the city manager and Bruce Silverstein. There's different sides to this argument, and people are fighting with each other. People on both sides feel their careers are at stake, and they're upset and offended, but is this what the city of Malibu really needs right now? Can we not agree on certain things despite our differences, which is to legislate on behalf of the people of Malibu? We have so many pressing issues, number one being the fire rebuilds and protecting the citizens from future wildfires. Number two, the homeless problem, and number three, the landslide questioning development in Big Rock for us Big Rockers. Let's focus on the task at hand, which is to take care of the people of Malibu and set aside this investigation and focus on Malibu, which is what really matters. This investigation will just further divide Malibu when we need unity and moving forward towards a common goal, which aligns with the mission statement and vision to maintain its natural, cultural, and rural setting. This money would be much better spent on making codes, regulations, and communications from the city and within the city more transparent and accountable and enforce them fairly. Thank you for considering this and thus standing for this for we residents.
Thank you, Joe.
Our next speaker is Lloyd Ahern.
Uh, good evening, counsel. My name is Lloyd Ahern, and, um, I'm really, uh, got a conflict on this one, because I have two opposing thoughts in my mind at the same time. And F. Scott Fitzgerald said, the sign of a first-rate intelligence is to have two opposing thoughts in your mind at the same time and still function. And the emotional and, and intellectual wanting to hold on to Reva is very, very strong. That's one, one part of my brain. And the other part of my brain is working. How, how could she possibly stay with this madman, you know, buggering her all the time? I mean, it's real, it's, I, I wouldn't take it, you know? And I'd pop him in the nose, I think. But the point is, we are really at a spot where she's, she got a very concise letter from her attorney. I read it, says, you know, I'll leave, give me the amount of money that I deserve for my contract to May of two thousand twenty-two. And, uh, I just retired from fifty-two years in the motion picture business, and you work, you work on pay or play. If they, they hire you and you don't start the picture, or you start the picture and you're not, you don't finish it, they pay you the rest of your contract. So, I mean, that's how I was raised and lived all my life, is pay or play. She's got a contract. Why can't Bruce lead the charge and say, okay, I get my way, Reva gets to leave, and we pay her what she deserves? Or we just tell Bruce, you, you got to lay off, you got, you got to accuse him of some form of harassment and stop him. But that's my conflict. I don't know what to do. I'm counting on you guys to do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Our next speaker is Hack Wong.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, hi, this is Hack Wong. I mean, I'm just here to support Bruce because, I mean, we voted him with most vote, to be here to clean up the city, okay? I mean, as I say, I'm a doctor. I don't deal with city business that much, and I'm not interested in general, until recently, when I get through these problems. And I see it totally differently. I see it hundred ninety-eighty degree of, of away from the, some her supporter giving her the, the growing, we will know. I get very difficult problem, and some of them as educated, East Coast educated, Ivy educated. I, I shock me when I hear something like that. I have proof. I have records, okay? And I will do that, but meanwhile, please, don't try to shoot down somebody set up the most and talk to them loudest to get things done, okay? We need to get things done, and you are here as a public servant. Please understanding that the old days of uh, the city hall, the department, different department, huddle with each other and in closed store, doing things without public knowledge. So I need to say that we need to have transparency. We need to have accountability for public servants, okay? And this is one way to do it, please. People who do not do anything wrong should not be afraid to open the book and let everyone what's going on, and I like to do that, okay? Please, um, and please work with each other, and they, we, that's what we expecting you do for us to help with the city, to make everybody better, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Howard Rudsky.
Hello again.
Hi, Howard.
Uh, again, we find ourselves in this situation where the city staff, some of these people I've worked with for twenty years. And I don't recognize them by what people are saying. These people work hard. They work longer hours than they get paid for. They work on weekends. You know, with our gate, I talk to some of these people weekly, and I catch them between four meetings. And when I have to communicate with the city attorney, the head of planning, our planner, we sometimes have to send ten emails just to find one time because they're so busy, but we always find it. And the city functions from a leader. And people take their culture and their cues and their work ethic from a leader. And this whole thing needs to be sussed out once and for all. You know, and somebody that we all can agree on, or you all can agree on, to determine the harassment and how going forward, hopefully Reva will stay. And there's a way that Bruce and she communicate, where she's treated like a human being, and he. where she's treated like a human being, and he's treated like a human being. And this has got to stop. This is like schoolyard crap. And I think the majority of the people in the city see what's going on. But unfortunately, now we have to spend money again, we have to take time away from the city's work, helping us citizens protect the highway, yo, deal with the Woolsey fire, deal with everything else, and deal with this. So we just got to deal with it, deal with it quickly, and make it public, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Norton.
Hi.
Hi, Lynn, I hear you.
I don't have a lot to say here, but I don't know why you need much of an investigation since I understand that Bruce and Riva have never been in the same room together, other than when it's being recorded at a meeting. So you have his emails, you have the recordings. It seems like your HR people ought to be able to, you know, talk to you about the situation. It does not really an investigation. And I had some things I was going to say, but I don't think they're that important. I leave it to you guys about what the right way is to do this. But I just want to make one more comment again about something that Mark Bauti said, which is that Steve made a campaign promise to get rid of Riva. Steve did not do that. He didn't do that publicly, and he didn't do it privately. I am aware that people, not myself, but that people specifically asked Steve to make that promise, and he specifically refused to make that promise, and he never made that promise, and he never campaigned on that publicly or privately. And so I just don't like it when people make things up. So that's all I have to say. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Lynn.
Our next speaker would be Rosemary I, but I don't see her in the meeting, so we'll try circling back in a moment. And we can hear from Georgia Goldfarb now.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Just a second, I just need to, sorry. Okay, first, while Riva's lawyer, Teresa Kanata, criticizes Councilmember Silverstein for his language, she has no such qualms about using very negative and, I think, inappropriately pejorative language about Mr. Silverstein in her letter. So let's be clear. Many Malibu residents do not like Riva Feldman, do not think she's done a good job, and think that she is grossly overpaid. Please see comparative salaries and benefits for other cities from the League of Californian Cities. Many support Mr. Silverstein, attempt to establish a code for transparency and accountability. In fact, I can't imagine that anyone without a vested interest would not support new measures or regulations strengthening transparency and accountability. And I think that's what he's working for. I believe that we should have much stronger language than currently exists, and that a new code can be worked out collaboratively. So please consider engaging someone like Fred Wucher from Stromwasser and Wucher, who has impeccable ethics and deep knowledge of these issues. That would remove any personal animus and result in an outstanding model for a city code. I don't think that Malibu residents have any desire to spend money investigating Mr. Silverstein. Those comments are public, for everyone to read or listen to. It's all out there. There is nothing to investigate. Further, Malibu should not be spending our money to create potential problems in the future for the city. Please, council members, this, this is the wrong path to take. Spend the money developing a city code for transparency and accountability. Engage someone like Fred Wucher to do so. This would give us a meaningful product, strengthen city codes, and allow us to resume work for the city, which is really why we elected all of you. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I still don't see Rosemary Ied in the meeting, so that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're back at, at council. I just, I'm going to start off here on this one, and I just want to say thank you to all the speakers. And I, I particularly want to address Joe Drummond. I, I feel her sentiment very strongly, that we just want to move on. But then, another side to me says, "We took way too long to get to this item." You know, from being, dealing with businesses for decades, and I think Steve has dealt with businesses for decades too, whenever there's a claim of any sort of harassment, it's investigated immediately. And we're just in a different situation where, and if it's somebody who's the CEO, for example, you have to go to someone on the outside. And if you don't do that, you're not doing your fiduciary responsibility or covering the liability of your, of the entity, of the business, of the city. So the last thing I want to do is another investigation. But if we don't, it's just going to hang there, and I don't think we're, we're doing what we need to actually do to move on. We're just leaving it dangling. And so any business I ever worked for that had a harassment claim, you investigate it. You have to. And it shouldn't be a big deal. It should, somebody mentioned it, it's all right there in public. It should not be a big deal. But if we ignore it, I don't think we're doing, I don't think we're doing our fiduciary responsibility. And with that, I'll, I'll be quiet and let the rest of the people speak here. Karen?
Thank you. I, thanks to the public speakers, I'd like to address something that several of them said. There's a need for transparency and accountability. I could not agree more. That's why I think this investigation is critical. We can't pretend that this letter was not sent to the city on behalf of the city manager's attorney. We can't ignore the charges made in it. And I agree with what Barry Haldeman said. When this is investigated, we'd like to see the city get a clean bill of health. And I have spent no small amount of time thinking about how we are going to attract a new city manager if we've got this cloud over us. So I, I do not agree whatsoever with anybody who said, "Don't do this investigation." Yeah, sure, we'd love to just focus on public works and public safety and things that are, that are huge needs at the city, fire rebuilds. But we cannot ignore this. So I think that's, that's it for my comments. And I agree with what Howard Redsky said. We need to deal with this quickly and publicly and get an independent investigation.
Well, Steve.
Paul, you want to go?
Sure.
My, my take on, on what's gone on and how we should be responding to it is, is pretty, pretty closely aligned with Mikey. I too come from a business where if there is any kind of a allegation like this, it, it gets dealt with very quickly, or we're going to lose both the people. They're both, both the people who are producing members of the community end up walking out the door. And I, I don't want to see that. And I, you know, I'm going to go slightly off, off pace here for a second. In the last part, one of the things that, that they were talking about, Jefferson Wagner's thing was talking about investigating, was that someone was found doing something wrong, and they were terminated. And I'm, to me, that is what you do when somebody is doing something wrong. You terminate them as quickly as possible, and you, you know, you move on with life and, and try to restore harmony to the, to the firm. So I, I think that the investigation needs to get done. It needs to get done right away. And it shouldn't take a lot of money because everything is all out there in public. So.
Oh, Steve, sorry.
Mikey, okay. And let me, let me try and come at this from a couple of different directions. We've been having these closed sessions to deal with significant exposure to litigation pursuant to the government code, whatever government code it is. We're doing a public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. And we're doing public employee discipline dismissal and release. That's what we've been doing, right? Now, typically, when you do that kind of stuff, you have, you have an agreement. And that agreement takes care of both parties, all right? It says, "Once you've gone there, you can't come back and, and claim something else was wrong." That there's, there's some process that takes place that says that the, the party that's left is not going to go out there and try and...
What's up?
What's up? What's up? Sorry?
Is John still in the, in the...
John's sitting right here, yes.
John, and I would just urge...
I'm being careful, John. You keep me on the track. I'm not saying anything. I'm not, this is, this is my experience in doing agreements like this, okay? Not saying anything we got here. All I'm saying is typically, when you do that kind of an agreement, you're protecting both sides of the party. That's what you do. That's what, that's what businesses do. They make sure that they've got something signed. We don't have anything signed. We're putting the city at risk. Why would you want to do that, Mikey? You're a business coach. Why would you want to put something at risk until we get, till we got it tied down? All right? And we don't.
And, and we're...
We're close, John. I apologize.
We're very close. Thank you, Steve.
Yes, okay. But that, to me, is a risk. You know, and, and I don't know what this is. What are you going to get when you get to the end of this investigation? So let's assume they come back and say it's harassment. That's an opinion. It's not a court case. It's an opinion. It's, it's the same thing as, you know, you've got an opinion, you like Riva, Bruce has got an opinion, he doesn't like Riva. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but you can't, they're not going to prove anything. That could be proof. It's going to be, the city attorney, he's going to do whatever investigation is. And, and I'll take you back to the example I gave you last week, the homeless thing, where I've got Kristy Hogan. She, she worked for the city of Malibu instead of, in Malibu because our LIP, even though our LIP says you can't have short-term rentals, don't, you can ignore that, you got to have them. Up in Santa Barbara, she's arguing a different side. So depending who the lawyer you pick and what their mood is that day and what their instructions are, God knows what kind of an answer you're going to get. And what are you going to do with it? Let's assume the answer comes back and it's harassment, Mikey. What happens next? Mikey, what happens next?
Do you want me to, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, tell me what, I, I want, what happens next? How do we play this out?
I, I don't know any organization that doesn't investigate harassment claims. I've never heard of it. I've just, I just don't know that. That is unlike anything I, I know of in any business that knows any clue what they're doing.
Okay, and let me just ask a question.
And what do I want to? I want to move on, is what I want to do. I don't want to leave it hanging with people.
So let's assume it comes back and it, and you're, the lawyer says it's harassment. Then what happens? What happens? Mikey, let Mikey answer, please.
Well, I guess then we know, I know, we know we're at risk, and we may going to need to have to deal with how we're going to deal with being at risk. I don't know, maybe the voters will want to recall that person. How do I know?
Ah, so now we're coming up with a program that says, "Let's figure out how..."
I'm not, so you, you're pushing me in that direction. I don't know what you want me to say.
Mikey, I'm, I, I want to know what you...
I'm following your lead.
This is your proposal. I just want to know where you think it's going to lead us. And apparently, it's a program that says if we can, we can get somebody.
I have no knowledge of...
We can figure out, maybe the residents will recall Bruce. That's, that is...
I thought that's what you were pushing for.
No, Mike, I'm asking you, you, this is your proposal. I'm asking you where you think it's going to go. That's what I want to know.
We're going to find out if we have a situation creating liability in the city. Or an opinion to that. And not investigating just leaves it dangling there. Why investigate the Wagner affidavit? That happened 10 years ago.
Mikey, Mikey, don't change the point. Where do we go if it comes back to be harassment? Where do you, you, you said, "Maybe the residents will recall Bruce." Is that where we're going?
I, I hope not. That would be horrible.
Then where are we going to go with this? So you come back and say it's harassment. What do you do next?
I'd probably consult an attorney on that.
To do what?
For next steps. What do we do if you have a city counselor who is, is guilty of harassment? That's a great question. Do you just ignore it? Is that what you're, is that your idea?
No, I'm saying that, that typically, in my experience...
Don't want to find out?
In my experience, Mikey, when you do one of these separation deals, you cover it there. And it dies. Now, all right? Because it can't go, it's not going to go anywhere. And you're going to get an opinion. Have you not heard an opinion from somebody that says it isn't harassment?
I think you're walking dangerously close to Brown Act.
I'm just asking a question.
Dangerously close.
I'm just asking a question.
I'm not comfortable with where you're going right now, to be honest. I think it's too close to another issue.
Well, I mean, the issues are tied, Mikey. They're together. And just trying to separate and treat it independently is, is a mistake. It's a mistake.
I've never heard that investigating a harassment claim is a mistake. It should have happened already. I think we're negligent in our responsibility not to do it. And if anyone else's, there's ever been harassment claims at the city, I know they've been investigated, I'm sure. I, you know, it's not my job, but, and actions have been taken. At my company, they were, every, everywhere I know that knows how to run a business, that's...
Oh, I, I don't have a problem investigating the, the, but getting it done in a way that gives us the correct answer, not to say, "I know it," you know, look.
Well, you're right, maybe another...
Get an opinion. Mikey, how do you take it from an opinion to a fact? Tell me how you're going to do that. It's an opinion.
Maybe another agreement will help take care of it.
Maybe what?
Maybe another agreement will help take care of it. You're asking for supposition. I don't, I don't know the answer.
No, I'm asking, here's the question. You guys...
I know the problem.
You have proposed that we do this now, right? That's what you're proposing. And, and my, as close as I can get to tell the truth, okay? There are other things going on that impact this. And doing this in this way is a risk, I believe. Because the other things haven't been solved yet. The other things have not been solved. And the other things help solve this problem.
So you think that we should just avoid harassment claims?
No, I'm, it's the same thing I do. Delay it. Delay it till we get the other thing done, then go back and have you do this.
Maybe it'll work out that way.
Maybe, maybe not. You want to take the risk? So you're, so now you're saying, you're a business coach. You tell your clients to take business risks, they don't have to?
I don't see the way you do it all.
Is that how you do it? Mike, is that, do you do that to your clients?
Hey, Steve, Steve, I'm not under, I'm not, I'm not under question to you.
You're not, Mike, I'm asking, look, I'm just, my point is, if you wouldn't do it for your business clients, why would you do it for the city?
I don't, I don't agree with you. Karen, you had your hand up.
I, I don't agree with Steve's line of thinking. I won't call it logic. I think we are putting the city at risk by not investigating this, okay? And as Mikey said, any organization, I don't care if it's a business, a school, anything, if you don't investigate a claim of harassment, you're a fool. Okay?
I'm not saying, "Don't investigate a claim of harassment." I'm saying this is the wrong...
Okay, I thought I had the floor.
Well, you're close. Don't say it's not logic.
Do I have the floor or not? John, are you acting as parliamentarian?
You have the floor, Karen.
Thank you.
Eve, let her say it.
Could, could council members not speaking be muted, please? Okay, who's, who's doing tech? Do you have the ability to mute council members that are not, do not have the floor? Thank you. We have a responsibility, not only to investigate this claim, but to all of the staff. I'm concerned about a search in the future for an interim city manager. I'm concerned about a future search for a, a new city manager. I don't see us in a strong position interviewing with something like this hanging over our heads, and there's no reason to delay it. So I move that we go ahead with this. I'd like to refer it to the city's human resources manager to take it from here and, and do a search for an investigator, an independent investigator to these harassment claims. That's my motion.
Paul?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Unless there's any more comment, I'll call for roll call. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring? Councilmember Euring, you're muted.
He was muted on purpose.
Can we please unmute?
No.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to item seven B, council policies.
We need you, you're still standing back, Mayor Pearson.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I'll wait. Thank you. Let me know if anyone sees him come on because I don't have a full window. Oh, here we go. Any luck, Alex?
He's coming on right now. If you can wait another moment.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, there he is. Can you hear us, Bruce? Are you back?
I am back.
Okay. We are on to item seven B, council policies. I think we have an update here. I'm not sure who wants to deliver this report. Is that Karen? Is that you? Is it staff? Who, who's delivering this?
Uh, I can, or Paul, or, uh.
Paul or Karen went at one of you.
Okay, um. So obviously we have a complete overhaul of, of city policies that we're looking at. Um, what we have had on the books has been cobbled together over decades. It's, uh, just a hodgepodge in my opinion. Um, we have the, the policies review ad hoc committee, which is council, uh, Mayor Protem Grisanti and myself. Uh, we have been looking at policies from, I think 10 different cities, uh, as well as our own, as well as the proposal from council members, Euring and Silverstein. Um, and, okay, sorry, who's not muted? Sorry. Um, we're proposing a study session to go over a draft for the next meeting, March 22nd, at a special meeting at 4:00 PM before the regular council meeting that evening. Gotcha.
Thank you. Um, do we have any public speakers on this item?
You do. You have three public speakers. They are Mark Bowdy, Drew Smith, and Howard Retsky. We'll hear from Mark Bowdy first.
Okay.
So on the issue of transparency, just be sure any code of conduct or any policies, emphasize simplicity. Um, you know, I don't want to judge Bruce by the single biggest mistake of his career, but the way things have started off in the city, um, you're all going to want to read the 58-page sanctions opinion by Judge King out of Florida. It's a long opinion in which the judge walks through all of the things that Bruce did or failed to do that helped package a fraud which cost people millions of dollars. The end of that sanctions opinion on pages 57 and 58, the judge goes out of his way to say, let's be clear, I'm not finding you innocent. And I'm referring this to the US attorney to investigate it. Okay, now, in this context, this transparency proposal that Bruce has recommended and that his supporters asked to be adopted, should not be adopted because it's too complex and it's too long. And in my experience, the lawyer who protests too much about the need for transparency, who lives five doors down the street from Euring, and I apologize to Lynn, I did not mean to suggest or state that Euring also made a campaign promise to get rid of our city manager. What I mean is the two men work hand in glove on nearly everything. And when one talks, you should assume the others behind it and that their primary goal is to hollow out the city from within and block all development down below at the civic center, which is why there was so much Q and A, about a million five utilities being built for us by La Paz. And it's why they're going to now stake out a position that's super counterproductive, blocking an ASL. If we do an ASL, the county will rein gifts and resources on us. That's all I meant, Lynn. But on transparency, keep it simple. Don't do anything long or complex. You'll find yourself bound up dealing with Bruce's technicalities for the next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker would be Drew Smith, but I don't see him in the meeting. So we'll circle back and hear from Howard Retsky now.
Okay.
Hello again. I think it's, it's a good idea to clarify all the city policies so that the staff can give clear direction when asked and they understand what is possible. So I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
I still don't see Drew Smith in the meeting. So that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. So we're back here. So this item is really just about setting a special meeting before our city council meeting on the 22nd? Is that correct? And, and you're asking for it at four o'clock? Is that correct? Do you have?
I think that would be enough time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm, uh, uh, one second, Steve. Just want to make sure that you think there'll be time that we can all have a bite to eat before the actual city council meeting because not to be selfish, but I'm going to probably fade away if we don't have a little break in between of some sort. Or I'll be rudely eating during the meeting, which is a bad look. So, and with that, I'll, Steve, you had your hand up.
What are we going to see at that meeting? What are you going, what are we going to get a look at?
Can I answer you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, what you're going to see is instead of a list of, of policies that were ordered by the period, by the dates in which they were adopted, to a policies that are arranged by the subject matter. And so that if somebody wants to find out something, they go to the, the section that has to do with what they're questioning about and read the policies relative to, for example, behavior during a council meeting or, or the way things should be done. So there's a bunch of different subheadings. We went through many different policy documents from different cities and some of them were terrible. Some of them were as bad as ours. And a few of them were really super well organized. And I think that the organization will make it much easier for people to comply with what the policies are because they're not hidden behind one about whether or not it's okay to, you know, have your gardener work after six o'clock on a Saturday.
So this is a reorganization process of the current policies? That's what we're seeing?
It's reorganization and we, we also adopt, we grabbed some ones that other communities had that made a lot of sense and they fit together well.
How about this? The, the last time we met on, on January 28th, we voted that in this meeting, we would come back with a draft of these accountability and transparency policy. Where is that?
I think that Bruce and, uh, and John are meeting about that. Have they met?
No, 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 no. They're not, they're not meeting on that. The last meeting we had, in the last meet, January 28th meeting, I asked a couple of questions and the question was, what are we going to get back when you guys do this? Subcommittee. And Paul said, you're going to get back an edited version of the transparency and accountability, uh, policy that was already agreed to in seven F. That was the agenda item that time. And then when the vote came down, the, the commit, the, the policy committee is to review the policy, policy by the city and return with a draft on this meeting, March 8th. Where the hell is the draft?
Oh, and so that's just taking a little bit longer to get to you, to, to the draft with all going on.
They said we're going to get the draft in next meeting. That's what I'm trying to speak. When do we see that policy?
You'll see it at the study session at your next meeting on March 22nd, which is what the item requests. And you'll see a draft of those policies as revised by and recommended by the ad hoc committee to you on that day. And we have taken into consideration, as Councilmember Grisanti mentioned, several other policies, your own policies, Councilmember Silverstein's policies and your policies. And all of that's being incorporated into one document that you guys can vet in a more informal study session type atmosphere on the 22nd. That discussion doesn't really lend itself to, to an agenda item. It, it, it needs a more informal discussion where you guys can roundtable the issues that are contained in the policies. And so that's why the, this proposal was made to you tonight.
Okay. I think Paul, I mean, sorry, Bruce had your hand up first.
Sure. So, um, yeah, Steve's right. We actually did vote and it was recorded as the, um, action of the city council that we were going to have a draft presented to us tonight for consideration for potential adoption. And it wasn't going to be a reorganization of existing policies. It was going to be, um, either the ad hoc committee's version of transparency, accountability, and ethics, among other things, or it was going to be a draft, a revision to what we had provided. And remember, Steve and I put forward a 50-page report before we even were seated, um, at the first meeting, before we even attended the first meeting, substantive meeting. But, you know, okay, we're two weeks behind. I get that. Things slip. But I would hope that what we're going to get two weeks from now is actually a proposal that we can potentially act on or make comments and edit and then act on at the next meeting. Um. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm heartened to hear John say that it does include transparency, accountability, and ethics issues. It's not simply a reordering. So, um, I do have a question about what a, um, special study session actually is, because it's not a term I'm familiar with. And I mean, what kind of participation by the public will there be? Um, are we going to have a genuine give and take? Or are we just going to take a turn saying what we have to say? And just what, what is envisioned about this special study session that's different than an agenda item, which we were supposed to come back with tonight?
In, in my opinion, it's, yes, the public always gets a chance to speak on the agenda item. So the public will get an opportunity to speak. Um, but it's, it's a, it doesn't have all the form. It's a special meeting. It's governed by the Brown Act. Um, but it doesn't have all the formalities of an agenda item that's on your regular business agenda. So you can inform, oh, I like this idea. What do you think, Karen? Well, I, I don't like that one. I like this idea. What do you think about that? So you guys can more roundtable in that study session to come up with a policy that you can hopefully adopt at your next meeting.
So we could adopt, okay, because the, the, the actions from the January 28th meeting include directed to the city council policy review ad hoc committee to present its recommendation at the March 8th, 2021 council meeting for policies. And, and it earlier said to, to instill transparency, accountability, and ethics. So I'm hoping that what we're going to get is a draft policy proposed by the ad hoc committee that we can either agree with and adopt or make edits to and adopt or we're at worst send back for some further tweaks and then adopt it at the following meetings. If that's what we're talking about, that's great. I'm all for that.
You'll have all those options available to you, Councilmember Silverstein.
And Karen, and it sounds like it's, you looked at all the policies though. Uh, that's what I'm hearing. Um, a lot quicker work than last time. Well done. Um, Karen, your hands up?
Yeah. Um, just two things. Yes. I think, uh, what Councilmember Silverstein just said is the goal, uh, to bring forward a draft that can be discussed, edited, uh, and hopefully finalized soon after that. But I do have a question on something that, um, Councilmember Euring said something about, uh, something was already agreed to. What was agreed to was that we would create a draft. There's nothing specific that we agreed to in creating that draft.
Now, I, I'd say that. I said, all, all we agreed to, we were supposed to have the draft this meeting. That's what we agreed to.
Well, it'll be at the next meeting.
As long as it doesn't take 12 years, I'm happy.
Uh, Bruce?
I, I don't recall if somebody had made a motion yet, but if not, I, I move that we, um, adopt this proposal to have a special study session or whatever it's called. Uh, John can recite it precisely. Um, two weeks from now.
I will second it so we can team up on that. Um, if we need to read the item, we have a, I guess we know we don't need to. We have a motion. We have a second. I'm calling for roll call.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Um, a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
Okay. Do we have to have a roll call on adjournment?
If the mayor adjourns the meeting, we don't. But if it's a motion from another council member, we do.
Um, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting so we can get that done. And I do want to thank the staff. I want to thank the city council. Um, a lot of, uh, some difficult items tonight. And I want to thank all the speakers. I want to thank everyone listening in or watching on the various outlets. And, um, we are adjourned and good night, everybody.
Bye bye.
Good night, all.